Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Meeting of April 24, 2012. I'd like to thank the Garden Club for the arrangement they always provide for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Here.
Mayor Ruwain.
Here.
Councilmember Higina.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Thank you. City Attorney, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a few announcements this evening. The American Cancer Society's Relay for Life will be held at Cappuccino High School from 10:00 AM this Saturday, April 28th, to 10:00 AM this Sunday, April 29th. And Vice Mayor, would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have had the privilege for the last few months to be one of the co-event chairs for this event. This is the third year of Relay for Life for San Bruno. In the first two years, it was sort of secluded up at Skyline College, and we brought it down to the community. And I'm so proud to say that we have tripled the amount of teams. We have doubled our fundraising so far, and we look forward to a lot of community involvement from the schools, from the elementary schools, from businesses, and also from the city of San Bruno. So I'm really proud that San Bruno City employees are going to participate in this year's event. It's something that I tried to get many of the departments involved in, and that's still a goal for future years. The event will take place this Saturday. It's a 24-hour event, and it's a celebration, it's a fundraiser, and it's an opportunity to inform people and to fight back against cancer. Just a few facts. It started in 1985, and since then, we've raised over $4 billion for cancer. It raises over $400 million a year, which is three times more than any other cancer fundraiser. And not to say that those aren't valuable events also, but American Cancer Society's Relay for Life takes care of all cancers, benefits all cancers. And so there are 5,000 events, over 5,000 events this year. San Bruno is very proud to be growing, and I'm proud to be a part of it because, you know, we all have our own cancer story, whether it's close to home, close to our hearts, or someone that we know. So I'm really looking forward to this weekend. It's going to be a real whirlwind of a weekend, but it's something that we all look forward to. Randy Schwartz, who is Community Service Director, is team captain for Team San Bruno, and so we do have a team. If you want to support the city and also support cancer, please see Randy and make a small donation, because every dollar counts. And we will cure cancer one day, and hopefully it's in our lifetime, or at least in our kids' lifetime. So this Saturday, stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 3B, Operation Clean Sweep, will be held May 5th, 8 o'clock to 1:00 PM at San Bruno City Park. You can register at www.sanbruno.ca.gov. Irene, did you want to say anything about that?
I do. First of all, it used to start at 8, but as we've gotten older, we've changed it to 9. So it starts at 9:00. Registration at the San Bruno Pavilion. We have coffee and donuts that are donated. We supply with you with equipment. You go out for two hours and clean up San Bruno, and then you come back and have a nice lunch provided by Recology of San Bruno. So we hope to see you there. It's a fabulous event. We've been doing it for almost 15 years, and I think this is our 14th year. And we always, this is our little logo thing, but we always also give people a gift. This year is going to be this tote bag, and it's insulated. And our goals are twofold. Not only are we trying to clean up the place, but we're also trying to provide you with things that will help you not use plastic bags. So this is something that we'd like to give you if you come and participate, and we have over 200 people who did it last year. And I believe we collected over a ton of garbage and recycling materials. So it's a great event. Because we've been so successful over the years, though, we have fewer places to clean up. So now we're adding different things to do. We do painting. We help spread out the woodchips in different parks and things like that. So if you don't want to pick up litter, we have something else for you to do. So I would like to remind the City Council of their participation and thank them for their support over the years, and give them their, so they don't forget to come.
I don't want it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
I'll be there.
Okay.
All right, thank you. We have a few presentations this evening. We were supposed to receive a presentation from Senator Leland Yi on the State of the State, but unfortunately, the senator could not make it this evening.
I apologize except for state right now giving, you know, press on SB 981, asking for some support.
Why don't you go to the podium and tell us that, so that we get it nice and loud?
I'm Claudia Lopez, and I represent Senator Leland Yi, and he just wanted to apologize. He's still at the state Capitol addressing SB 981. I know some of you are very well aware of that, and so he will be coming hopefully soon.
All right. Thank you very much. Item B, we have received a presentation from San Francisco International Airport staff regarding planned security measures and maintenance efforts for the west of Bay Shore open space and habitat area.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Weidner. I'm the Government Affairs Manager at San Francisco International Airport, and I'd like to thank you, the council, for the opportunity to come and give you a very brief overview of some work that San Francisco International Airport is doing to maintain our west of Bay Shore property. As you may know, San Francisco owns and has the responsibility for maintaining a large portion of open space to the west of Highway 101. It borders both Millbrae and San Bruno, excuse me. About 600 residents in the area between the west of Bay Shore area to the west to El Camino received letters about six weeks ago informing them that we would be stepping up our work to maintain the area, and we offered to come to the council at that point and give you a little bit more detail, which I will do today. So let's see if I can do this. So just a brief overview of what exists in the area, the west of Bay Shore area. It's home to wetlands, which includes reclaimed shoreline, seasonal wetlands and uplands. It also houses protected habitat. It is a protected habitat for two species, and because of that, we have a recovery action plan that's been approved. It's also a utility quarter. As you know, there's PG&E substations, electrical and gas lines. It is home to some Bard facilities, and it has an SFO water main and drainage pump in the area, as well as the north bayside Forest Main Sewer Line. Again, just to show you the codes that require that we, as the airport, have the responsibility to protect the habitat and the population, specifically of the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake, both of which live in that west of Bay Shore habitat. Here are two pictures of them. The governing agencies that require us to do work to make sure that these animals are not threatened or harmed are the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the California Department of Fish and Game, and the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We, the airport staff, need to coordinate with those four agencies and show them what we're doing in the area to make sure that the habitat is protected. So what are we doing currently to protect the habitat? As I mentioned, we have, for quite some time, and will continue to work on the already-approved recovery action plan. We will continue our biological monitoring to determine that the species, to basically show us that the species are not just living there, but not being harmed and thriving. We've already installed some no trespassing and sensitive habitat signs. There had always been some signage, but it wasn't very consistent, so we've gone in and made sure that it's really obvious when you go there, that you're not supposed to be there. We've installed new locks on all of our gates, so we can monitor the various people who need access. As I mentioned, it does have a lot of activity out there. We've posted speed limit signs around the property for the authorized vehicles, and we've increased patrols and enforcement to prevent unauthorized entry. Most importantly to you and your residents is the fact that we will, in the future, be putting up some fencing to further protect the property. We found that some of the residents that do have fences that border that west of Bay Shore property actually have gates that open up out onto it, which, as you can imagine, some of those agencies aren't real happy about. So we will be, in the future, I know that's going to be something you'll want to hear more about, and I brought you some pictures of what that might look like. And of course, we will continue with the vegetation and thinning removal of some of the underbrush and things there that's important to maintain the flood control. So I know that's also something that's very important to your residents. So here's a picture of what the fencing may look like. I can tell you that it might not be exactly like that, but you will be able to see through it. We're going to try and make it as subtle as possible. We're not talking about a concrete wall or anything with, you know, sharp objects at the top. It's going to, we're going to try and make it as subtle as we possibly can. We've also established an email account at the airport that goes to our community affairs staffs. Should your residents have specific questions that we can answer, something that I'm not able to answer for you today, we staff this, and you can always feel free to send any specific questions that people might have for you to that, and we will get right back to them. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any general questions you might have.
Any questions? No? Mr. Rico, you have a question?
Robert Rico. I just had one question. In the past, you've brought goats out to eat the fire break, and I got a subcommunication this afternoon from Mr. McCarron, and he said they're going to bring them back in. The past couple of years, they've eaten halfway across to wherever instead of the 15 or 20 feet, so hopefully they will be curtailed or restricted so that they eat closer. And last year, they didn't. That wasn't done until after the Fourth of July, and that was a concern with potential farmers.
I did see your comments, and I believe Mr. McCarron wrote back to, and Mr. McCarron just walked in, so I will let him, if there's something you want to add to that.
You did get my comments. We'll work the goat herder to do a better job maintaining that area, and our apologies. So, any other questions for us?
No, I think if we do, we'll get them through staff and get them written down and get some answers. I know Mr. Rico had quite a list of questions. He lives right there, and they were, they're very well put, and, you know, some of the answers were great and some were great, but it wasn't what we wanted. So we'll be getting back to you through staff on some of those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor's staff wants to thank you on behalf of the Airport Commission, the Airport Director for allowing this opportunity to share this information with you.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Item 4C, I'm going to present a proclamation declaring April 22nd to 28th as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week. Mr. Rico is our representative, and I'll read a couple of the whereas's in the bottom here. And Mr. Rico is our representative on the Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Committee with the council, for the council with the County of San Mateo. Whereas professional mosquito control based on scientific research has made great advances in reducing mosquitoes and the diseases they transmit; and whereas the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control District work with other public agencies to reduce the pesticide risk to humans, animals, and the environment while protecting human health; and whereas the West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week will increase the public's awareness of West Nile virus and of the importance of integrated management and controlling mosquitoes and other vectors in San Mateo County. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of San Bruno that week, that the week of April 23rd through April 29th, 2012, be designated as West Nile Virus and Mosquito and Vector Control Awareness Week in the city of San Bruno. So, Mr. Rico?
Honorable Mayor, Council, and city staff, I want to thank you for proclaiming the week of April 23rd through the 29th as West Nile Virus Awareness Week here in San Bruno. As the San Mateo County Mosquito and Vector Control has a proactive program and is consistently on the lookout for mosquito larvae, our goal is to prevent adult mosquitoes from ever becoming a problem for residents. The district wants to thank the city of San Bruno and many of your staff in insisting and getting our information out to your residents and being additional eyes on the lookout for dead birds that may be carriers of West Nile virus. Residents can call the statewide number 1-877-WNV for West Nile virus bird, B-I-R-D, when they find freshly dead birds for pickup. We're not interested in birds that have been squashed by vehicles. And should residents find that they're being bitten by mosquitoes, they can call the district directly at 344-8592, and we will send someone out to inspect and take the appropriate action. And I want to thank you again for your constant support of the district's efforts for your residents.
And thank you for all the time you put in on our behalf. Thank you. Item 4D is, I will present a proclamation declaring May 5th, 2012, as Earth Day in San Bruno. And there are a number of whereas's here also, but we'll read a couple. Whereas the city of San Bruno annually conducts Operation Clean Sweep, in which thousands of San Bruno residents, employees, and guests have participated in projects such as litter control, landscape improvements, and general maintenance of our public spaces; and whereas the city of San Bruno is committed to the preservation of our environment and encourages its community members to participate in projects and receive education to protect and enhance San Bruno's environmental assets. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of San Bruno hereby reclaims May 5th, 2012, as Earth Day in San Bruno, and encourages all residents and businesses to help make San Bruno a greener, healthier, and more sustainable community. And along with that, we have a couple of things that are going to happen on and around Earth Day. The 15th Annual Operation Clean Sweep, as was said earlier, sponsored by the Beautification Task Force, will begin with registration at 9:00 AM. Volunteers will be assigned to morning litter cleanup or other special projects in the community before enjoying a barbecue lunch provided by Recology of San Bruno. Also Streets Alive, Parks Alive, is sponsored by the city of San Bruno and the county of San Mateo. From 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, this program will feature demonstrations of community classes, programs, and activities to promote health and active living. And Earth Day inspires environmental awareness and encourages the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our natural resources. Displays will be on site throughout the morning to show how residents and businesses can help make San Bruno greener, healthier, and more sustainable. And for more information, you can contact Randy Schwartz, 616-7181. And I will present this to...
Go ahead.
I'll present this to Irene O'Connell. There you are.
Thank you very much. And I will take it. And if I may?
Yes.
I have a couple of things to say, and I'm very proud to be part of this group. We have some volunteers that come and work very, very hard all year long to do different things to help beautify San Bruno. One of the exciting things we are doing that's different this year, which will not happen on May 5th, but will happen on May 12th, if you notice as you travel down El Camino at our fire station there, there's a plot of land that's being cleared that will be planted with zero-scaping, drought-tolerant, low-drought-use plants, and it's going to be a showcase and a pilot project for San Bruno. It takes a couple of years for those types of gardens to flourish and look very attractive. The first year, they looked kind of funny, but after that, they look great, and they use less water, and they help percolate the water that does fall down into the groundwater, so it helps clean that all up. So if you want to participate on that, that's what this is. It's sponsored, it's a free workshop. It's on May 12th, and it's from 9:00 to 12:00. And if you go on the San Bruno website, you'll find out all about it. So it's very exciting. It's a hand-on project. You can do it, learn about it, learn what plants work in your area, and go home and do it in your own yard. So, that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. One more presentation, and that's the present a proclamation declaring April 28th, 2012, as Tanforan Assembly Center Memorial Day, and the month of May is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month in the city of San Bruno. And I will not present the proclamation this evening, because Councilmember O'Connell will present it at the event this Saturday morning at Tanforan. So was anybody here expecting to say something? Could you please step to the podium? Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Ruien and the City Council of San Bruno. As you know, 70 years ago, on April the 28th, was the opening day of the Tanforan Assembly Center where 8,000 Japanese-Americans, majority of whom were American citizens, were held before they were sent to internment camps in the interior of the United States. On April the 28th, from 10 to noon, we are going to have a commemorative ceremony and unveil the photographic exhibit that we have put together to show the pictures of what happened then. And also, Mr. Paul Catagaki, who's a photographer, the Sacramento Bee, has been finding the people that were in the original pictures and taking their pictures and telling their story of what happened in the intervening years. I think it's a very moving exhibit in terms of not only the history, but telling the story of the people that were affected by the evacuation. So we'd like to invite all of the city of San Bruno to come to the event, and the exhibit will be up through the month of May at the San Bruno Bart Station, which is on the original site of the Tanforan Assembly Center. I have some spare posters that Bard is putting out, and they will be on their cars if anybody would like one of the posters and a short description of our committee's efforts. I'd be more than happy to share them with you.
Sure. Why don't you leave those with their city clerk?
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you Saturday. I know there's a number of events, as you heard earlier, about Relay for Life, so I'll be floating around, and the vice mayor will be floating around, and the rest of the council. So you'll get the presentation this Saturday presented to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Item 5, review of the agenda. Now, I'd like to move a few items around, given the fact that we have a crowd here tonight. First of all, item number 11, which is the report of the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. I'd like to move that right to after item number eight, public hearings. And then, on item 10, I'd like to rearrange that and do E first, D second, B third, and A fourth. E being receive report and provide direction to staff regarding decommissioning PG&Es lying 132 in the Crestmore neighborhood. D being adopt the resolutions for construction and design work associated with the Crestmore-Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project and receive an update on the status of ongoing projects. B is the receive report and adopt a resolution amending the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee bylaws. And A is appoint Citizens Committee to advisory commissions, boards, and committees. If I have no objections?
No objection.
Okay. Item number 6, approval of amendments to the regular city council meeting of March 13, 2012, and special closed session council meeting of April 6, 2012. Any errors, corrections, or omissions? Seeing none, they'll stand as submitted. Consent calendar, all items are considered routine or implemented earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member, citizen, or staff. Any action on the consent calendar?
If there's no one pulling anything, then I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second? Motion second. On the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Item number 8, public hearings. There are no public hearings this evening. Item number 11, I'd like to go right into the annual report from the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Robert Rico, I'm the current chair of the Citizens Crime Prevention, and as soon as my assistant clicks on the right, be happy to give you a quick overview...
Chief, the chair.
...of our year.
There we go.
I think he needs another assistant.
This is the San Bruno Citizen Crime Prevention yearly report for the year of 2011. My clicker is not clicking. Maybe let's try that. Okay. Committee members for the prior year, myself as chair, Felix as our vice chair, Sonia as our secretary, Walter Carrasco, one of our members at large without an office position, Frank Deering, John Decropolis is in the audience tonight, and Officer Tony Perkins has been the police department liaison. I would like to also mention Officer Howard Hoyer has stepped in two or three times on some of our community meetings that we've had on behalf of the police department. Accomplishments and activities, our number one activity is to constantly try and grow Neighborhood Watch. We did get a large contingent of residents at both the Marisol and the Merrimont communities, probably about 20, 25 resident addresses in each of those two communities. We've got a couple additional ones that are in the works. We have continually been able to utilize your San Bruno Cable Channel 1 monthly, where we have been running bilingual Spanish and English crime tips on such items as drunk driving, Halloween safety tips, Fourth of July safety tips, and every month, there is at least one set of tips. We got a proclamation last year relative to National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday in August. We were not able to put an actual event together. We are looking at what we're going to be doing this year along the same line. We supported and participated in Police Recognition Day in May at the Shops at Tanforan. It's coming up on the 12th of May. We will again be assisting in getting it set up and assisting the police department. We'll also have our information booth, information table as part of the event. We continue to hand out wherever we find an opportunity, whether it's at the Police Day, whether it's at the Posey Parade, or even last year, we did one set at the farmer's market, our Neighborhood Watch brochure, trying to enlist residents in San Bruno to consider forming a Neighborhood Watch block or more. We developed with the help of one of our prior committee people that worked for the San Francisco Crime Lab, a How to Collect Your Child's DNA, a real simple little brochure, have it both in Spanish and English that we are constantly making available. We also, with the help of our one member that used to be on the Oakland Police Department, have a suspicious individual form. It's a tri-fold, gives you some of the background, some of the questions. It has a schematic of a person to help you in remembering and writing down, should you see activity that you'll later report to the police. We're constantly looking at developing more brochures. Goals for 2012, obviously, the number one is to continue to grow our Neighborhood Watch program, to continue in some way to participate, to publicize, to get people to think about the National Night Out, which is kind of similar to Neighborhood Watch, where you get the neighborhood, the blocks, the people to get together to meet their neighbors, to not take back their streets, but make a recommitment to basically be eyes and ears and support for the police department. We will continue to develop and disseminate information through brochures, through monthly crime tips on cable TV, and we are in the process of updating the Citizens Crime Prevention website with some of our information and obviously our current contact information. We participated, as I said, and we will participate in Police Recognition Day, May 12th, and potentially will be participating June 9th at the Disaster Preparedness Day at the San Mateo County Fairgrounds. We did participate along with the community preparedness two or three years in the past. We shared a table down there. Obviously, we want to thank the San Bruno City Council, the various staff of the city, obviously our chief, Officer Perkins, as I said before, Officer Howard Hoyer. We've had a couple other police officers that have sat in on our meetings and answered questions that residents have come up, have asked, so we get the support through the whole department. Our meetings are the second Thursday of every month, 7:00 in San Bruno City Hall. There will be assigned, the agenda is posted outside on the west side, under the glass as required under the Brown Act. We always talk about Neighborhood Watch. Obviously, event planning, meetings are open to the public. Probably three or four meetings a year, we may get somebody from the outside, whether they just have a question, or whether they have a complaint, or whether they really want to find out more about forming a Neighborhood Watch block, and for those... And for those Spanish-speaking, we have the same information. And with that, I'll be happy to either answer questions or write them down and come back with good answers, or ask the Chief to-
Any questions at this time?
-dig me out of the hole.
Bob, you do great things, and I really want to thank the committee, because it's year after year, there's always something, and it's, things are growing and you're moving forward. And I know you got frustrated for a while, because, you know, there was some inactivity, and I know how you are, and, you know, things are, things are moving forward. What about the kids? I think I mentioned this before, is there something that we can introduce to the schools? Because I know Fire Department has, for many years, at least done, you know, some awareness through, you know, fire prevention posters and stuff. And I think, unless you've already got something going, or that maybe we should get the kids involved, just a little awareness, because that's where, you know, smart thinking starts, is, you know, at that young age, you know?
Okay, I have, I have two parts to the answer. We will obviously take it under consideration and figure out maybe what we can propose to do. But with the approval of the Chief, we have a new brochure this year from the, happens to be from Assemblyman Jerry Hill. They have a coloring book that's on fire safety that we will be having available at Police Day on May 12th, when we have any of our upcoming activities where we give out the information, we have that. We also have a new supply of a different coloring book that has to do with safety. And a couple of our members, they just like sitting behind our little table, and they see a kid, and they'll get, they'll show them the coloring book or whatever, and it gets them up, it gives the kids something to do, it gives us the ability to start talking about fire safety, or safety at the children's level all the way up. So we partly got it covered a little bit because of the donation of the brochure. We'll see if we can come up with a more full-fledged program.
Great, thank you.
All right. And as always, thank you for your efforts. This, these commissions, boards, and committees are strictly voluntary, and they put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, and they make our city strong. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you.
And thank the rest of the members of the committee for us. Thank you. All right, item number nine, public comment. Item's not on the agenda. It is the council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would anyone like to address this under public comment? Please state your name and street name, please.
I'm Doris Bravo. I live up on Hamilton Avenue, Crestmore One. Last Wednesday, April 18th, there were two pit bulls running loose in our neighborhood. One of the pit bulls ran up in an instant and killed my little Chihuahua. His name was Chico. It was a terrible, horrifying experience, and I hope it never happens again. I don't know what you can do, but I want to thank San Bruno Police Officer Fife and Animal Control Officer Bagueta for responding so quickly. I guess that's all I have to say, but it's a terrible thing that happened, and I hope that those dogs never get out again to do this. They might be loving in their home, but in an instant, my dog was dead. That's all.
Thank you. Chief?
First, we want to express our sympathy for the loss of your dog, and to let you know that we are still under investigating this incident. We have yet to locate the owners of those two pit bulls, but we are working with the Peninsula Humane Society to try and identify those owners and follow up with this investigation, including any potential charges or further actions on the animals involved. But again, it is under investigation. We hope to identify the owner of those two dogs.
Are the dogs at the Humane Society now?
No, we have yet to identify those two dogs yet. But again, we have been in contact with the Peninsula Humane Society. We are up to speed on their investigation, and we, I know today we were out doing some follow-up, as well as yesterday as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Chief, what should people do if they see a dog, not necessarily a pit bull, but a dog that's unfamiliar with the community? What's the best thing for them to do?
If anyone encounters a dog, and if that dog is on a leash, and there's, their, the dog is, makes some overt actions, or they're afraid, they should notify us right away. If somebody encounters a loose dog, and they can't find an owner nearby, again, report it to us. We do respond to those, barring any other emergency that we're on. We do respond to those. We do try and corral the dog, and then we notify the Humane Society, which comes out and picks those up. We also respond on any dog bite incident, or any threat of, where there may be a vicious dog. And again, we work with the Peninsula Humane Society to try and bring those to resolution, whether that's getting a permit for a dangerous animal, or further action as deemed necessary by the Humane Society.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might just add to what the Police Chief just advised you, beyond the investigation and the immediate coordination with the Peninsula Humane Society, one of the things that the City Attorney's Office is, has been involved with, I would say, too frequently, because this is unfortunately not an isolated situation. It does happen from time to time that irresponsible owners will leave their, their dogs unattended. And our City Attorney has, on a, on a few occasions, followed up with a police investigative activity and assured that, through the court system, that the proper actions are taken to assure that this type of thing is, is addressed in the most permanent and effective way.
All right, thank you, thank you. Item 10, we're going to move right to item E, which is receive report and provide direction to staff regarding decommissioning PGNE's line 132 in the Crestmore neighborhood. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Harry Burrows, and I'm the City's Project Manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project. Sorry about that. Item before the City Council tonight is to present information regarding the decommissioning of PGNE's line 132 gas transmission pipeline. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to seek input from the council and the public. No action by the City Council is required. What I wanted to do was take a second and just familiarize or refamiliarize everyone with line 132 as it runs through San Bruno, in particular, the Crestmore neighborhood. And what we're looking at here is a, this red line represents line 132 as it runs through the city. I-280 is here, Skyline Boulevard is here, and this is San Bruno Avenue. The black line that's, runs down San Bruno Avenue in parallel to I-280 is PGNE's line 109. Within weeks after the gas explosion and fire, Chris Johns, President of PGNE, made a commitment to the city that the portion of line 132 that runs through the city from the San Andreas Station to the Healy Station would be deactivated and decommissioned. And those two locations are shown here as well. Following through on that commitment, PGNE applied for, and the city issued an encroachment permit for work related to the decommissioning in September of 2011, one year after the explosion occurred. PGNE subsequently performed work on the pipeline that included purging the line of any trace gases, capping discrete sections of the pipe, and installing fill tubes for future injection of slurry into the abandoned pipeline. PGNE's original intent was to leave the pipe in an empty state for a period of two to three years in case access was needed for any ongoing or future investigations. Notwithstanding the assurances from PGNE, the desire of the community since the explosion has been to make sure that the pipeline can never be used again in the future for gas transmission. There's also been a very vocal preference from many in the neighborhood to remove the pipeline from the ground in its entirety. The city's opposed to the pipeline remaining empty for two to three years, and given the desires of the community, has asked PGNE to explore the removal of the pipeline. PGNE and city staff have been in discussions for many months regarding the pipeline abandonment. As a result of these discussions, PGNE has provided an analysis of the impacts of three potential scenarios for the pipeline. These include a full removal of the pipeline through the neighborhood, slurry filling of the pipeline through the neighborhood, and what we call a hybrid solution that involves removing portions of the pipeline as well as filling portions of the pipeline through the neighborhood. I'll briefly describe each option now. The full removal option involves removing of the pipe from the ground. The work would be done in approximately 400-foot section, so the total length is, you know, over 4,000 feet. We've broken into 400-foot sections. PGNE would concentrate their work in those particular areas. The excavation, the work area, would be a minimum of 25 foot wide, and I'll show you in a second what that means, in particular, in certain portions of the neighborhood where the streets are narrow. The full removal would limit the access in some of the narrow streets. It may involve removal of curb gutter and sidewalk in many areas. Complete road closures would be required, and traffic restrictions would be required as well. There would be possible service disruptions for water and sewer to some of the residences. There's a possibility of some gas odors. There would be a tremendous amount of dirt, dust, and disruption, and for about a four-and-a-half month period, there will be about 30 workers on the site to accomplish this. Again, it's be very impactive, but the public's desire to get rid of the pipe would be achieved. This slide illustrates some of those 400-foot work sections. Those are those long lines, red lines there. So work would be accomplished within that 400-foot section, and then it would move to the next section. The area north of Clermont Drive up to Sneethe, this portion, Glenview, where the pipeline runs, is very narrow. It's narrower in that section of the neighborhood than it is to the south. The roadway, the roadway to the south is wider. In that area, given a 25-foot work area, it's going to be required to essentially close the roadway during the pipeline removal. This is, picture illustrates an excavation that was made in one area near the pipeline back in last September, and I think it's a good indication of what those impacts would look like. This black line right here represents an extension of the curb line. So what you can see here is just to excavate down to the pipeline, they've had to cut away some of the sidewalk and take away the curb and gutter as well. They're about eight foot out into the roadway with the excavation, and as you can imagine, for the pipeline removal, there's a need to have trucks beside the excavation to put the material into, also trucks beside the excavation to place the pieces of pipe in as they come out. So this area over here would be mostly taken up with the work area, the width of the work area. There would be a width of roadway, probably eight foot or so, that would be available for emergency vehicle access and access for residents during certain periods of the day. The next slide illustrates the same thing, but just looking north. You can see where those gentlemen are standing on the left-hand side of the photo. They're standing on just a small portion of the sidewalk. The sidewalk has been cut away, and the pipeline runs up the street that, in each 400-foot section, they will have to go in and do a similar removal of the curb gutter and sidewalk. The next option is the slurry filling, and this is what PGNE originally proposed, however, their desire was to wait two to three years, which, again, is something that the city is opposed to. The slurry filling involves the injection of concrete slurry into the pipeline. The slurry will be mixed on-site using a process that essentially adds air to create a lighter mix to ensure the complete filling of the pipe, yet will still harden into a solid concrete mass so that the pipe can never be used again. In terms of impacts, that has very minimal impacts to the residents, particularly compared to the full removal option, very little street work will be required. As I stated previously, PGNE, as part of the original work last September under that encroachment permit, did cap certain sections of pipe and put fill pipes in for future slurry. Those are at the street level within boxes that can be opened up and the slurry pumped into it, and then the boxes, top of the box is replaced. There will be no need for complete road closures with the slurry filling option, but there may be some parking restrictions. There's going to be concrete trucks and mixing tanks to provide for the slurry injection into the pipe. No gas odors are anticipated, however, in the event that there are some present, PGNE will have equipment there to scrub any odors coming out of the pipe. This effort will entail a workforce of about 10 workers on average, and will take about three weeks in duration from start to finish through the neighborhood. Again, this is the least impactive option, but the public's desire to remove the pipe is not achieved, but it does ensure that the pipe will never be used again. The last act, option that we asked them to explore is what we're calling the hybrid option. And the theory behind this option is, can we achieve a little bit of both, meeting some of the public's desire to get some of the pipeline removed, as well as minimize the impacts to the neighborhood? And so what we've done is identify a couple possible sections of removal that are in areas that aren't fronted by residences. So in those locations, we could go in, have PGNE remove the pipeline. It would still be disruptive to traffic through the neighborhood, would still require detours, some localized road closures, but mostly, you know, probably one-way traffic, traffic control to keep traffic through those areas. The remaining portion here, besides those two sections that are illustrated, would be filled with slurry. This is just a summary of that. The hybrid approach, as I said, would still be disruptive to the neighborhood, but not impact directly any existing homes. The duration of this would be about eight weeks. Primarily, the largest impact is going to be during the removal process. There may be a little time adjustment, depending on if one or two sections are taken out. Again, this concentrates the highest impacts in the least disruptive areas, and it may meet the need of the public to remove at least a portion of the pipeline through the So given the concerns that we've heard from the public, as well as all the factors involved, staff is recommending that the hybrid solution be pursued with PGNE, and we will work with PGNE to determine what's the best location, which section, or which sections, whether one or two sections are the best to be removed. Before I open up to questions or comments, I did want to take a second and talk about a portion of line 132 that was discovered subsequent to the pipeline explosion. And this pipe was unknown to the city. It was abandoned as part of the original construction of the subdivision in 1956. So Crestmore Canyon was filled, the old pipeline followed the old ground, the canyon was filled, and a portion of the pipeline, new pipeline, was constructed at, you know, three or four feet below grade where the current pipe is. That pipeline, the majority of it is deep. It's been abandoned since 1956. It was not filled when it was abandoned. Now that the city knows about it, the city's asked PGNE to fill that pipe with slurry so that it's abandoned properly. Filling with slurry or removal meets the current abandonment procedures in the pipeline industry. So PGNE has provided a plan to the city that the city's consultants are reviewing for that abandonment, filling with slurry. Any work done on that 1948 section of pipe will be done concurrent with the work we just discussed related to the abandonment of the 1956 portion of line 132. And this- And this exhibit is just meant to illustrate approximately where that section of deep pipe is located, and that is essentially a little bit north of Clermont, down Glenview to just a little bit south of Earl Avenue. So with that, we're here to answer any questions or comments that the council may have. In addition, there's representatives from PG&E in the audience, should the council wish to direct any questions directly to them.
Harry, what is, what do these three options do to our plan to reconstruct our infrastructure? And they're the water and the sewer lines and all the stuff we have to do. What kind of delay is involved in each of those scenarios?
The project that was first, which I'm going to get to next, is a Phase II utility project. And what that project will do is replace utilities, water sewer, storm drain, in essentially this area, the fire-damaged area of the neighborhood. So as you can see, the possible removal of this portion of pipe is in conflict with that work. We have discussed that with PG&E. We think that we can phase our work with their work such that it doesn't impact our schedule, but to say that it has no impact is, would not be true. It does have an impact, or does have a scheduling impact that we will need to work around. In terms of the slurry filling, the slurry filling doesn't really impact our construction work, plant construction work at all. Complete removal would not have an impact on the current phase of construction, I mean, on the future phases of construction. It would, again, have some impacts related to the proposed Phase II utilities, which, again, we would need to work with PG&E to ensure that those impacts are minimized.
Okay, and could all of these, whatever we decide to do, be started at the same time, or is there a wait period for one phase over another? You mentioned they want to leave it open for investigation, but that is, that's all, you know, off the table if we decide on a slurry fill or...
Yeah, PG&E has agreed to fill the pipeline now and not wait the two to three years. Either fill the pipeline or remove it and not wait the two to three years that they originally had desired. The, the schedule that, they're fully aware of our schedule with our Phase II utilities. They have a contractor on board. They've been discussing the project with their contractor, and they have done some preliminary design work for the removal of these sections shown here should we go with the hybrid option. They are probably four to six weeks away from today if we said go tonight, from actually starting that construction work.
Okay. Any other questions of staff, vice mayor?
Harry, has, have any of the residents been informed of these options, or at least in a casual, you know, discussion as far as the desire to have it removed, especially the residents on Glenview?
Yeah. We've had no recent formal discussions with anyone. We have had some informal discussions with some of the residents in the neighborhood as we're up there doing some of the work. I think one thing that all of us can remember is during the community meeting that was held in late January, when we did mention the fact that we were in discussions with PG&E about removing the pipeline, that was met with full applause from the audience. So, we know that there's a strong desire out there to remove at least some of the pipeline through the neighborhood.
But I would like to add to that, though, that this is the first time we have had in the last few days any kind of formal presentation. It was brought up, I believe, in January 27th, the Church of the Highlands, when everyone said, "Let's just get it out of there," and it all sounded well and good, but we instructed staff to research with PG&E what the ramifications of removing it completely, filling it, or the hybrid finally came up. So, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we had all options on the table and understood it very well ourselves, but this is really the first time that we have had an opportunity to visit with staff as a council and hear these presentations, so you should know that. Any other questions before we open it up to the public?
After.
After, okay. I see a number of people in the audience probably want to speak on this. Would you like to? Please step to the podium and tell us your name and your street.
I live on Clermont Drive. Right after the explosion, I did go and testify in front of the Senate, and my main goal with many of the neighbors was to get the pipe out of our neighborhood. And PG&E agreed that they would not have that pipe run through our neighborhood, that they would get rid of it. So, I'm, my concern is that we have a clear written commitment that they'll never use the pipeline again for natural gas service, either for transmission line or distribution line. I had another concern about the 1948 pipe. I was out of town and I got a call from a neighbor. Apparently, they had opened up that pipe for something, and the smell of gas was throughout the neighborhood, so everybody started to panic. That is a concern to me, that they're not properly, I guess, purging the gas out of the pipe. So if we keep the pipes there, we need to make sure that they're properly purging the gas out of the pipelines, because I don't know too much about gas, but I think it stays in the pipe, even though there's not gas running through it. I'm not an expert, but I think the gas stays in the pipe, and I'm not an expert, so. What I did is I contacted Richard Cooperwitz. He was at one of our town hall meetings, and he really impressed me with his knowledge, and I contacted him to get his opinion. And he, let's see, he says towns usually want to keep their options open concerning the right-of-way agreements crossing their public lands. So, filling the pipeline with concrete is, could be an overkill and precludes the town from possibly granting a right-of-way to another party, for somebody to lay cable or fiber optics, for example, within old pipes that, if the opportunity presents itself. This could save digging up a lot of the town that can be very disruptive. But, it's a very emotional issue to keep that pipe in our, under our streets, not knowing that it was there. So, just hearing you tonight, I mean, my two cents would be taking parts of the pipe out, but making sure that the pipe that remains is purged properly, so that we don't have the possibility of another explosion. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. On that note, to the city attorney, do we have any issues with right-of-way or encroachments or anything if that pipe is either, if we take the option of hybrid or fill it in place?
I don't think so, but I can, Harry might have a comment about that.
Well, if I may, let me address a couple comments that were brought up here. I think in terms of purging the pipeline, the portions of the pipeline that PG&E decommissioned last year have been purged. Again, there may be some residual trace gas or odors or captain in those pipes. Like I said, PG&E, as part of the filling, slurry filling of the pipeline, is committed to having equipment there that should any odors be present, they will scrub those prior to the releasing in the atmosphere. In terms of the 1948 pipe, we just received last week PG&E's proposal for slurry filling that pipeline. It includes some detailed technical information about how they plan on dealing with the odors that we know are present in that pipe. Our specialized gas consultant is looking at that now, and they will address any concerns that, or raise any concerns that they have, and PG&E will address those prior to filling that pipe. And then I think in terms of the right-of-way issue, there's no right-of-way issue. I think the issue that was brought up, that was a valid one, you do have a 30-inch diameter pipe in the city street that's, you know, filled with concrete that in the future, should you need to go in and do maintenance on any water services or sewer laterals, it is an obstruction that you have to deal with.
Okay. And it's an obstruction that we've dealt with before?
Correct.
All right, okay. Anyone else like to address the council? Please state your name and your street.
My name's Dennis, because Dan's, I live on Glenview Drive.
Okay.
I'd prefer that you just fill it with the slurry of the car, whatever it's going to do. There's been enough construction and disruption in the neighborhood already. You know, I know some people want it out of there, but they don't necessarily live right there on the street. And I live on the Sneath Lane side of Glenview, the narrow part, and I saw when they dug up the other piece of pipe, I mean, it was a pretty major undertaking, so I would just prefer that you did that. Maybe send out a survey to everybody who lives on Glenview or in the affected areas and see how they feel about it before you make your decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Maria Barr.
Did you pull that down, Maria? There you go.
My name is Maria Barr, and I happily moved in into my neighborhood since 1976. I've been extremely happy, joyful, wonderful neighborhood, but since the explosion, my life has been a turmoil. Every day, I'm very nervous. I look out my window and there's a lot of construction, there's a lot of trucks, there's a lot of activity, and it's all for a good cause, because all my neighbors' homes are being rebuilt and things are looking up. I'm back in my home now, and I'm happy. But, hearing the presentation that was done today has convinced me that slurry is the best option for all of us. Excavating the pipe and spending all that time digging and the narrowness of the streets is an unknown factor. We don't know what's down there, how things will settle, how rains will affect us. For me, I will feel very confident that the slurry filling in of the concrete will accomplish the job, and then it will be safe. Of course, if anything comes up that we don't know about, I would like PG&E to be forth with and tell us, be honest with everybody. But for me, the option of the slurry would be the best option. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this and get your feelings and opinions?
My name is Elizabeth Coons. I live on Clermont Drive. I'm fine with the slurry filling, but I want to know, what is PG&E going to raise my rates to, to ensure my safety in my neighborhood? Because every time something's come up, every one of them later comes back, well, PG&E says, "Well, we'll have to raise the rates in order to pay for that." I think we've paid enough in our neighborhood.
Thank you. Just, my two cents, you've paid way too much, and we all have paid way too much, but there are discussions ongoing, which the city is taking parting with the CPUC, and a lot of this, including the settlement that the city received and other settlements going forward that are coming from shareholders and not rate payers, and that's pretty substantiated. So, you know, there's more discussions going forward. I understand that completely, but we as a city are watching that very, very closely. Yes?
Hi, my name's Doug Coons.
Did you pull that up a little closer there, Doug? Thank you.
My name's Doug Coons. I live on Clermont Drive. I'm not sure, and I think we're making a little bit too much big a deal out of the disruption. The neighborhood's been in disruption since the explosion occurred. It's going to continue, and we know that that's going to continue. I have been just, I live right there where Plymouth comes down and connects to Clermont, at the east end, and we just live through the Phase One water, which is probably more difficult putting in a new pipe than taking out an old one. And it didn't take anywhere near the 25 feet. They still had to dig down real deep. It looked like it was about six feet deep. That digging is going to continue, I understand, until all of the water mains are replaced in the neighborhood, and we're going to keep doing sewer. So this disruption is going to continue for who knows how long. So, whether we, whether we choose to fill it with slurry, remove the whole thing, or remove part of it, I don't think we should make such a big deal out of the disruptions, since we're going to have it regardless.
Harry, would you have any comments on replacing a water line versus removing a pipe like this?
Well, I think the future utility replacement within the entire neighborhood is going to be very disruptive, and it will last, you know, probably with the next project starting construction in May, it will probably last for nine to 12 months, barring weather delays. So this neighborhood will have a lot of disruption for utility construction in the next year. That is a very correct statement. I think the difference with the PG&E Line 132 removal, particularly in the stretch of Glenview between Clermont and Plymouth, that will require pretty much full closure of the roadway to accomplish the pipeline removal. The installation of a new pipeline is a little bit cleaner from a construction standpoint because we're not dodging a lot of those utility crossings that this pipe is going to have to dodge. And the material will have to be excavated out, put into trucks, hauled away, then another truck will have to come in to put the piece of pipe that's just been cut out of the ground onto, and then equipment and more fill will have to be brought back in to compact and backfill. So, it's a multi-step operation that does take up a wider portion of the road than the installation of a single water line, unfortunately.
Okay. Anyone else like to tell us your thoughts?
I just want, do want to clarify one thing. The gentleman who spoke earlier about the disruption to his home, and I think he lived in the section north of Clermont on Glenview, again, the hybrid option that we're looking at would not be removing a portion of the pipe in that section. It would be to the south where the road is wider.
Okay. Do we have engineering representatives from PG&E here this evening?
Yes.
And I have a quick question for them, if they could step to the podium. The big concern, and I have it also, is that in fact you can scrub this gas if in fact we decide that we want to just fill this pipe up. Is this neighborhood going to, you know, be disrupted again psychologically with the smell of gas? It's really been a problem.
I understand, and our plan is to, as we inject the slurry, to have a, all of the gas that's coming out the air, that's, as it's being filled, the air will eject it and will be scrubbed of any odor. So that's, that's in the plan, and it's in the plan that was presented, and also in the plan that's being presented for filling the, I think, the deeper line.
And is the scrub just a big, another word for a filter, or what?
The exact type of filtration system, I'm not 100% familiar. I believe it's carbon-based, that absorbs the gas, but definitely it eliminates odors.
Okay. Any other questions for PG&E while they're here? Michael?
I'm curious about the extremities of this pipe. We know that in this section that we're talking about, either removing or filling, there's no gas that's going to go through there, but on either end of it, there are some connections still going upstream to other facilities, and so I'm wondering about how those, those things are capped and whether there's going to be continued monitoring on those other ends at either side of the neighborhood.
I can verify precisely how they're capped, but I believe that they're capped and that the, they've been isolated from, from the pipes that are going through the streets, and those pipes have been capped and inerted at the present time, when they're filled or removed. If they're filled, then there's no way that they can ever be utilized again.
Right, but Line 132 at either end is still pressurized, and there is gas in there?
Correct.
Okay.
And I'm, I can verify for you how it's capped. I don't know precisely the detail of how it's capped. I don't know precisely the detail of how it's capped. Our standard method is to put a pipe cap. I can't tell you the exact details of the connections.
Okay. Thank you.
Rico?
Not being in the engineering or technical, you're, obviously you can get us back to clarification, but I think what's important is that the residents also, as well as the council and staff, want to have the clarification and language that's understandable and makes sense, that's very clear to anyone and everyone, exactly what Councilmember Salazar asked about the odor. Odor is a concern, and even though it's, that's what gas does, what it does to this neighborhood, what it does to the community, is something we want to have some assurances with whatever decision is made, that we mitigate that at all possible. I know you were going to get some clarification on that, but I think that's something that's very important to us all as this community. So if we can have some more assurances and exactly what the filter is or how it works and how it operates and how that mitigates that potential problem.
I think that's a very good point. We had a small, what PG&E would probably consider a routine incident a few months ago, in a small distribution line, which is very, very small. And there was a smell of gas. We evacuated the neighborhood. We had police and fire there. We had helicopters circling overhead, and my cellphone was going crazy wanting to know about the new explosion in San Bruno. So, and this was way, way far away from Crestwood and Crestmore and Glenview. So it's a very, very sensitive issue in our city, and it has to be taken very, very seriously. Any other questions or comments?
To the chair.
Michael?
I have one more question, please. I'm also concerned about the older pipe, the 1948 pipe. And around the practice of abandonment of these pipes, is it fairly typical practice to leave the older pipes in the ground? And I'm wondering on the older one, what the metallurgical composition is of that and if there's any potential contaminants from the metals that could leach into the groundwater?
Okay, so on the metal, I can check on the exact metallurgy, but typically it's carbon steel pipe.
Even in forty-eight?
So there's no heavy metals and the carbon steel is usually steel. So I'm going to verify on that and go back to you.
Okay. Well, given the age of the pipe, I would think that maybe older materials, maybe lead might be in those pipes, and I'm just wondering if we just fill that and leave it there, if there's going to be potential contaminants years down the road?
Okay. Well, I can't tell you exactly lead and metallurgy, but I will absolutely verify and get back.
If you could get us an answer. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for PG&E? Public? Any more? Yes, please.
And perhaps this question would be directed to Mr. Burrows. We had the pleasure of meeting him one morning on the street. It would be very nice, I think, for the residents of our community to possibly get some kind of a timeline as to what is going on in each separate phase of these projects. Because as it is now, there is one thing going on for several weeks, and then we hear of something else going on. And we residents seem to think that it might take as long as five years for our little neighborhood to come back together again. And that might be underestimating, but there is so much that needs to go on, and there is still so much stress when we go by that site daily and we see all the construction, because the construction reminds us of what happened to our community. So perhaps if we residents could get a timeline of what various projects will be taking place, and even, Harry, that what you presented up here was really informative. I would love to see the neighbors get an explanation of those three possibilities of what can happen to the pipeline, because I don't think any of us, none of us know about that. It'd be very nice to get it in written form. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Coons, I have a question. With regard to the slurry, exactly what is this slurry? I assume it's some liquid fill that's going to be put in the pipe mixed with something, but is it going to fill the pipe completely? Is there going to be hollow spots? Is there going to be, does it harden? Does it set?
We'll get an answer for you.
What happens?
Okay.
What is it? By the way, at the recovery center Friday night, we have coffee hour five to seven. Everybody come.
Can you answer that question?
The slurry is basically cement, paste, water and air entranment. It's designed to fill the pipe completely and harden, not quite as hard as concrete, but it's, makes it completely, there's going to be no voids, and it'll fill the pipe completely.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have something?
Poppy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. One thing I did want to address is, you know, your very serious comment around the odor.
Identify yourself for everyone here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Poppy Gamble in Government Relations for PG&E. As we work with staff, we're providing technical, detailed technical information on how we plan to mitigate the smell in every step of projects that we're doing. So for the 1948 pipe, we've already provided that to staff. And then as we get additional direction on this project, we plan to provide the same level of detail on that mitigation. So we'll ensure that staff does receive that, and you'll be able to get detailed steps and technical information that the consultants can review so that folks can be ensured that that experience will be mitigated.
To the chair. And Poppy, I think would also be important, I know you mentioned staff to have the information, but the community, the neighborhood, the recovery center, the website, I think all those avenues need to have that same notification and information so it is available to anyone at any time.
Yes, and I do hope to have open houses and meetings and things that we will coordinate with staff along with their project that they're conducting with the sewer and water so that it's a comprehensive approach. So thank you. I appreciate that.
And if I could add, I mean, this is an exclusive neighborhood. We need confirmation that they are getting the information. I mean, even if it's just going out there and even if you're sending it to a certain address or whatever, there needs to be some follow-up to say, did you receive this information? Do you receive, do you understand this information? And I think not only for PG&E, but what we're doing also, you know, because there's going, there's going to be some gaps. I mean, if you assume that you're sending it out to every single resident, someone's going to come back and say, I didn't get it, or I didn't understand it, or I didn't pay attention to it. So I think it's important enough that they all know.
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, staff is, you mentioned no formal action tonight. Well, what exactly are you looking for from us?
You're certainly welcome to take an action. We're looking for your guidance and your direction as to your preferred option or whether it is your preference that we do some additional work in order to assess a broader interest on the part of the community.
Irene?
Thank you. I just want to touch on another piece. We talked about the disruption, but we didn't also talk about people who are doing construction. And if you are closing off some of the streets in front of these homes that are having construction worked in, how's that going to affect people?
The...
Obviously, it will affect people, so.
Yeah. The portion of the street that would require full closure, again, is the piece that's between Clermont and Plymouth. And I think that there's one home that's finishing construction currently. We would phase that such that obviously we impact the homes that are under construction the least. A portion of that, you know, would have to probably get delayed if it was the full removal option. Again, under the hybrid option, the only portions that would be removed would be in areas where there are no fronting homes.
Okay.
So we wouldn't be dealing with an issue of disrupting construction, ongoing construction of those homes under the hybrid option, but it would be a concern under the full removal option. You're correct.
Okay.
All right, the staff is looking for some action if we want to do it. Let me just start. Now that I hear the three options, I was sort of leaning towards hybrid, and mostly because everything achieves the same end. But it's more of an emotional thing. People in January really wanted that pipe out of that street, and I thought maybe the hybrid is the way to go. It doesn't really serve a whole lot of other purpose then to quell some emotions up there. But hearing what I heard tonight, I don't believe anybody really talked about hybrid too much. It sounded like, you know, get this thing taken care of, fill it with concrete if that's what it takes, make sure that as you fill it with concrete, you're not pouring gas smell into the neighborhood, and make sure that everybody's informed as you go along. I said many, many months ago at St. Robert's Church, within forty-eight hours of the explosion, that we're here to help you and we will hold your hand one by one if that's what you need. And we're still here to do that. So if we have to get a flyer in hand delivered as a city council, everybody up there, we're happy to do it. But my feeling is now, if it's okay with everyone here, and I want to hear from all of you, fill it, let's be done with it. Let's, I know someone said earlier this evening that she looks out her window and she sees the construction, which is a good thing, but it reminds her. I think, I think we start digging up the street for a pipe and disrupt the community even more, it'll probably remind her more of what happened. So my feeling is, I think we just fill this damn thing and get it done. It'll never be used again, and we have those assurances. It won't be if it's filled with concrete, and I just want to get it done. I want to get on with the rebuild and, not to forget the past, but to respect it and go forward. So that, those are my thoughts.
If I could, Ms. Mayor, and I agree to a certain extent, but I didn't go through it. And I know we're trying very hard to feel what you're feeling. I would really like to hear from all, you know, not necessarily all residents, but I'd really like to hear from the Glenview, the people that live on Glenview, that drive on that street, that live, that live, you know, right there and have that pipe underneath. Because I don't know what you're, you know, what emotion you're dealing with in that. I didn't go through that. I mean, we witnessed it, a lot of it, but can't imagine what you've gone through. So it would be a really help to know what you feel. And if it's just fill the pipe and get on with it, so be it. But if there's someone out there that just has to have a section pulled out for their peace of mind and their, you know, for their closure and they're moving on, I think we need to take that in consideration.
Michael?
Mayor Wayne, I agree with you that the slurry method is probably, based on what we heard here and what we've read in the report, the most logical choice for us. But I also agree with the Vice Mayor that there is a psychological aspect to it. In fact, the whole reason that we're even considering this is because there is a psychological aspect. So I would recommend that we proceed with the assumption that we would do the slurry, but allow maybe a short comment period where we might revisit this after allowing the neighborhood to comment on that decision and allow us to come back. The last thing I want to do is delay this any longer than we have to, and I'd really like to see the neighborhood put back together, at least repairing what's in our power to repair. And so I wouldn't want to drag it out longer than necessary, but perhaps a short comment period would be, would be in order. The other thing I'd like to see is just confirmation from PG&E and from our staff that there is no possibility of contaminants from either the older pipe or the newer pipe if we were to leave them in the ground.
Okay. Rico?
I have some of the similar comments that Councilmember Salazar has. I'd like to get that information back from PG&E that said they will provide it to us so we can make a well-thoughtful decision. I happened to be up on the 900 block of Glenview last night, and I looked down, knowing that we had this meeting, I was there for another reason, and was trying to visualize the pipe being removed. And I just was thinking, as the rebuilding is occurring, as you see people coming back, I just thought that would be too disruptive back to that community, again, the neighborhood. Slurry is something that I would be leaning toward at this point after having the presentation, but I also would like to, want to make sure, because I know, obviously, for those that live there on a daily basis or are trying to come back home, there's a lot of emotion. There's a, there's a pain that we've all suffered and you still suffer. And I would like that opportunity for at least folks to express what their views and opinions are and at least have that option available. I think we've done it as a community and as a neighborhood, and I think we need to continue on that path. So I'd like to hear from everyone that wishes to give us their thoughts and advice.
Irene?
Thank you. This is a very difficult decision, especially since we did not have to live through what you all lived through. I am inclined to ask for a survey. I think we should ask the people who live there, from one end of the block to the other, what they would like. Our staff report shows the options very clearly. It talks about what the impacts are, it talks about how long something is going to take. Like Option One is four and a half months of thirty people every day coming in, trucks, closures. But if that's what it takes for everyone to feel better down the road in a year, maybe that's what we should do. The slurry takes three weeks, and there's little disruption, and the hybrid takes two and a half months, and there's a medium. So I think the people there should have a very clear-cut opportunity to see what's available, that what we're looking at. I'd be happy to walk up and down and hand out surveys if we want to do it that way. Maybe we could do it within the next two weeks and get opinions from people. So I appreciate the people who came here tonight and spoke. I think I'd like to hear from other people in the neighborhood as well.
Okay. So I believe this is consensus to do a short survey explaining what you explained tonight in very simple terms of the disruption, what's going to happen to the community, what's not going to happen if we do certain things. Number one, also, we want to get a report back from PG&E on potential contamination of existing pipes in there and have assurances that if we slurry fill them, they will in fact be solid-filled and no chance of any type of contamination after that. So do you need any more direction, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, there are two more items that I believe the council was looking for from PG&E, just for the purpose of the record. The second item beyond the environmental contaminants is more detailed information about how the caps are secured and placed on the pipe ends to assure that there's no leakage. And then lastly, the details regarding the odor scrubbing procedure and the assurance that that should provide in lay language, how residents can be confident that the procedure that PG&E intends to put into place to prevent odors is actually an effective, proven and reliable procedure.
Okay.
To the chair.
Irene?
However you make this survey up, I would suggest that you have a contact, either yours, a telephone number, an email address or something, that if people have questions about the survey or other things, that they can get ahold of you.
All right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. We'll move right on to the next item, which is Item D. Adopt resolutions authorizing construction and design work associated with the Crestmore-Glenview Neighborhood Reconstruction Project and receive an update on the status of ongoing construction projects. We have three separate actions to take here.
Mr. Mayor, as you just stated, there are three separate actions required as part of this item for the City Council tonight. The first is the authorization of a ward of a construction contract for the next phase of infrastructure replacement within the neighborhood. The second is approval of a contract for corrosion engineering services. And the third is approval of a contract for landscape design services related to the Crestmore Canyon replanting. But before we go into details of those three items, I wanted to take a quick moment to update the council on the status of some of the work that's been completed and is currently underway within the neighborhood. In addition to the canyon slope stability work that was performed immediately after the explosion fire, as well as the surface restoration work that was done to reopen the roadways, the city's recently completed the Phase One sewer project. That's shown here in green. What that project involved was the replacement of a undersized segment of pipeline between 1646 and 1650 Clermont Drive. In addition to that work, there were some sewer laterals that were necessary for some of the homes that are currently being reconstructed, both for some of the occupancies that have recently occurred as well as some pending occupancies. The Phase Two utility project will ultimately construct those laterals, but we wanted to make sure we weren't holding anyone up. So in that construction contract, we issued a change order to the contractor, constructs- seven additional laterals. This project, including the, the change orders, is essentially completed. We're in the project closeout stage now and expect to bring a certificate of completion forward within the next 30 days. The other project that's in construction is the Phase 1 water system improvements that were mentioned here earlier. They're shown on this exhibit in blue. And what that project entails is the construction of new waterline connections and pressure-reducing stations to help serve this neighborhood. During the past several weeks, there's been a considerable amount of construction, both within Claremont Drive, East and West, within Snee and on the north side of Snee. Today, actually, we were installing a portion of the waterline in front of Fire Station 52 on Earl. This, this construction will continue for another three or four weeks until that project is essentially completed. With that, there will be some additional traffic detours and some localized traffic delays with traffic control that the contractor is providing. It's anticipated that the bulk of the construction though will be completed by the end of May on that project. This brings us to the, one of the action items that's before the council tonight, and that's the Phase 2 utility replacement project. And what that project will do is replace and install new utilities within the fire-damaged area of the neighborhood. And those utilities include new waterlines, new sewer lines, and new storm drainage lines. In some locations, particularly at the intersection of Fairmont and Claremont, there's some seepage issues that have been there for long-term. This project will put new storm drainage facilities in there that will resolve those seepage issues. This project represents the beginning of the major infrastructure reconstruction in the neighborhood to date. As I said, the Phase 1 projects were fixing some smaller issues, resolving some, some localized problems. This represents the, the first full-scale improvement project to replace the infrastructure in the neighborhood. The next step is to reconstruct the infrastructure in the remaining portions of the neighborhood after this project is completed. As I stated previously, this work unfortunately will be disruptive to the neighborhood, particularly to the fronting residences. The contractor will provide traffic control during the construction. They will keep access to the homes open at all times, or most of the times. There may be very short periods of time when a contractor is putting a pipeline right in front of someone's driveway that for, you know, 15 minutes to half an hour, they may have their access impeded. If there's an emergency or any requirement during that timeframe, the contractor does have steel traffic plates out there that he can put over the trench and get vehicles across. It takes, you know, literally five minutes for him to install those in an emergency if, if need be. This project will last from about mid-May to probably about mid-September timeframe. The plan is not to repave the road and reconstruct the curb gutter and sidewalks in this area as part of this project. The trenches will be dug, the new pipes will be put in, and those trenches will be repaved. The intent is to get through this project, get through the Phase 3 utility project, which again will be the replacement of the utilities in the remainder of the neighborhood, and then come in at the end and do one street resurfacing project that will provide new streets, new curb gutter sidewalks where necessary, as well as new streetlight system. We're taking numerous steps to keep the neighborhood informed of the impacts of the construction, as well as to address public concerns. We will be holding periodic open houses throughout the construction period. These open houses are planned to be about two hours in length, and they'll be held every four to six weeks, depending upon the interest and needs of the community. They'll be staffed by myself as the project manager for the project, as well as the contractor, representatives from the contractor and other city departments, depending on the issues that arise. The purpose, we provide an avenue for the public to voice any concerns or raise any issues that they're having with the construction, as well as to just keep the public informed and the contractor informed of the issues directly. The first open house is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, May 12th, from 10:00 a.m. till noon at Fire Station Number 52. This first open house will take place just prior to the anticipated start of construction of this project. So we'll send a notice out to residents related to that meeting here within the next week. We're also in the process of placing a project trailer up in the neighborhood. And what the project trailer will be is essentially a presence in the neighborhood of city personnel during the construction of not only the Phase 2 utilities, but the subsequent phases of work. The trailer will be located at the city-owned lot at 1680 Claremont Drive. We'll also have a bulletin board where we'll post updates, notices, and other information on, that people walking through the neighborhood can look at the bulletin board, get periodic updates where traffic detours are going to be, traffic closures that might occur that The project office will also include temporary landscaping and other measures to make it aesthetically pleasing as possible to the neighborhood, so that it's not an eyesore up there. Again, the purpose is to really have a presence in the neighborhood, be an avenue, so, such that people can raise issues and raise concerns, and we'll be there to listen to them and address them. In addition to these steps, the city will continue to post regular updates related to construction, detours, road closures, as well as future meetings and open houses on the project's website, which is www.rebuildcrestmore.org. And just a reminder that all residents in the neighborhood were sent a postcard announcing that website about six, eight weeks ago. The remaining infrastructure reconstruction will occur, as I said, in a couple additional phases upon the completion of the Phase 2 project. The utilities will be constructed, starting at the end of this project, through the fall and into the beginning of next year. The paving and surface restoration project will happen next spring and into early part of next summer. And we'll update those schedules as final design progresses. We do currently have schedules for these projects on this, the website that I mentioned, the rebuildcrestmore.org website. But getting back to the action items before the council tonight, the first item is the award of a construction contract for this project, the Phase 2 utility project. This project was advertised in February, and we opened bids on April 9th. City received 10 bids. The low bidder was Shaw Pipeline Construction at 1.698 million, about approximately $1.7 million. This was about 21% below the engineer's estimate for the project. I think that's indicative of the continued, you know, very competitive climate in the construction industry right now. The bids range, ranged from a low of 1.7, which was Shaw's, to a high of 2.4 million. We did receive one bid protest from the second bidder, Mountain Cascade. Their protest was related to the low bidder's omission in writing out in words his bid total. All of his math was correct. We deemed that the omission of him writing out the bid total was an inconsequential error, and so our recommendation is that the council award the contract to Shaw Pipeline. In addition, we've established a construction budget of about 2 point, just less than $2.2 million, $2.187 million. That includes the bid amount plus a 15% construction contingency, as well as a direct estimate of the construction management and inspection services for the project. So the second item before the council tonight is a contract with JDH Corrosion Consultants. They are a firm that provide expertise in cathodic protection design and corrosion engineering. The city's making a major investment in new infrastructure within the neighborhood. Many of these facilities will be metallic, either ductile iron, waterline, or copper water services. PG&E also has some steel gas distribution lines and service lines within the neighborhood. They have cathodic protection system on them as well. San Bruno has corrosive soils, particularly in this neighborhood, and cathodic protection should be at least explored on these facilities, such that, such a major investment, we don't run into corrosion problems in the future. The additional scope item that we've asked JDH to perform is investigating the integrity of PG&E's gas distribution system within the neighborhood. Within this area that's shown here, the Phase 2 area, we call the fire-damaged area, PG&E did go into that area and replace the steel gas distribution lines with plastic. The concern that we have is we're going to be investing a tremendous amount of money on new infrastructure and paving the streets. We don't want to be putting all that money into the neighborhood and have a 50-plus-year-old steel gas system that PG&E owns in the ground that's subject to potential failure, corrosion, and other things going forward. We've asked PG&E to provide leak history for this system, as well as surrounding neighborhoods that are about the same age. We've also asked them to provide any cathodic protection information they have on their pipelines and corrosion test data that they have. In addition to that, within the fire-damaged area, we had PG&E dig up a couple of the services and the Ts and sent them to a laboratory for testing. So PG&E has told us that this gas distribution pipeline is in excellent condition, that it's not in need of replacement. We're going to go through the proper steps to ensure that, you know, we're, we fully believe that before we allow them to remain in the ground. So JDH will investigate that information, perform that testing, and provide recommendations to us. So we recommended a contract with them, with JDH be entered into. The final item before the council tonight is a consideration of a contract with MIG. And this is for the landscape design for the Crestmore Canyon replanting. The replanting scheme, or a replanting scheme, using native materials in a high chaparral or coastal theme was presented in the public meeting that we held at the end of January. MIG's currently providing landscape design as a subconsultant to BKF engineers, who's doing the civil engineering design for the improvements in the neighborhood. This portion of work was not included, the replanting was not included in that contract. We thought it made the most sense, since MIG was familiar with the area and the project, for them to provide that landscape design work. And so that's what this contract is, is for landscape design, post-construction vegetation management plan, and construction support services. The replanting of the canyon is scheduled to occur late this fall and into the winter of next year. So with that, conclude the presentation on these three items, and just a reminder that we are asking the council to take three separate actions on this item tonight.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Ken?
Here's, here's the cynic in me, but Harry, I don't know if you, if you caught the, the reaction when, when you stated that PG&E said this and PG&E said that. I, I, I fully believe that, you know, you're going in the right direction and using the consultants and verifying for yourself, you know, for our, you know, for our own good. I know PG&E has a ways to go to, you know, to rebuild the trust, and whatever the reports say or whatever, I mean, we, we chuckle or we, you know, we, we roll our eyes. So I just think that we need to know for ourselves so that we don't get caught up in, you know, assuming that they, you know, that their reports were right, that we do find out for ourselves. That's, like you said, I mean, we're investing so much, we need to know, we need to be, we need to be sure. Regarding the planting, I mean, that's, that's a design just for the canyon, the, you know, the, the outline of the canyon, or what, what else?
Yeah. This contract before you tonight is just for the replanting of the canyon. It's, it's just the area from the canyon rim down to the bottom of the canyon.
So not knowing what, you know, entails a consultant on something like that, what, what exactly are they, I mean, are they going to show exactly where plantings are going to go for, for that roughly an acre of, of area?
Yeah. They will prepare actually a planting and irrigation plan, because the plants will need to be irrigated for a period of probably two or three years until they establish roots. The vegetation management plan that they will be preparing includes, if you've driven by there lately, which I know you have, you see those eucalyptus trees that are re-sprouting again. The idea is to let them re-sprout, actually this year, we're going to cut them back, but to keep those stumps alive, because they are helping secure that slope, helping with the stability of the slope. As the plants that we'll be planting take hold and mature, we'll slowly wean those eucalyptus stumps back such, and eventually, in essence, kill them off, and the new plants will take hold.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Action by the council?
Separate, separate actions, you say?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd like to introduce a resolution for Item 1, authorizing the Reconstruction Phase 2 Utility Replacement Project.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
I'd like to introduce a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a contract with JDH Corrosion Consultants Incorporated.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
And finally, I'd like to introduce a resolution authorizing City Manager to execute a contract with MIG Incorporated for the landscape design of the canyon.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
All right. Item 10B, receive a report and adopt resolution amending bicycle and pedestrian committee bylaws.
Thank you, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I will keep this report brief, as I know we still have a number of items on the agenda tonight. As the City Council knows, the BPC has been a committee for about a decade now. However, for the last year or so, there was a number of issues they had with having, maintaining attendance and maintaining a quorum at, at these meetings. Based on this, staff came to the City Council a couple months ago, and based on our recommendation, the council directed to change several members that were commission members that sat on the BPC to members at large. After a slow start, we actually had a good recruitment, and a number of people applied for the, for the BPC, and a number of those people were in front of the City Council tonight interviewing, and we actually had a couple more that were also interested but unable to make it tonight. So along with the recruitment, we also are proposing several changes to the BPC bylaws in order to encourage attendance and increase the probability that we'll see a quorum at a majority of meetings. Briefly go over the five. The first is changing the frequency of meetings from a monthly meeting schedule to a bimonthly meeting schedule. The second is to allow the committee by a majority vote to set the start time annually. They had noticed that people had fluctuating work schedules, and that'll allow to increase the number of people that attend each meeting. Third is to allow a youth representative to serve, if a youth representative wants to serve. It won't be mandatory, it'll be an option, though, in the future. Fourth is to allow a non-resident to serve. We had someone to interview tonight, there, we have two mass transit stations in San Bruno. We have a large number of employers, and there's a lot of people that either bike directly here from surrounding communities, or actually take in BART or Caltrain and then walk or to, ride their bicycle to their work. And then fifth, actually changing the acronym used, instead of BPC, be the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or BPAC. That's more consistent with county-wide committees, as well as regional, regional committees with the same authority. You also noticed that tonight I put in front of you a red-line version. After we distributed the council packet, we found we were alerted to a number of changes that had to be made, more consistency-type changes and updates to make this consistent with both other bylaws within the City of San Bruno and current procedures for the, for the BPAC. So at this time, I can take any questions.
Any questions of staff?
Through the chair. Three things. One is just a comment, two questions. One, on regular meetings, I know there's a desire to have it between the hours of 5 and 7 each year, make a determination of what that time start will be.
Correct.
My question is, is for continuity and consistency, shouldn't we say it's, let's say 6 o'clock and less changed, therefore, I mean, because every year then it would be, well, what time is a meeting? Well, last year it was 5. I, I think- Last year it was five, I think it's six. I don't know, we have to ask. So I don't know if it's better to establish a set time, and then it can be reviewed and the committee can make it a change. That was one comment. The second thing is on absences from meeting, Section 3.11, I noticed that it is changed, so that was good. But if we're having six meetings a year and we're going to allow an absence of, up to four, excuse, I think that's over 50%, I don't think that's a very good ratio. I would at least maybe recommend that I go down to three, at least. And then the final thing, I was going to say that I want to appreciate staff because I know I sat up here before when we had the Personnel Board about reducing amount of members when we went from five to three. Didn't support that, of course. But here, instead of saying, well, we're having a hard time getting members, let's go from seven to five, we, we went the extra mile, we reached out, we got citizens involved, we had them part of the process. And we're going to, hopefully, if this passes, then establish, I think, a, a good group of individuals who've come forward that we've interviewed tonight and two weeks ago, and that is what I was referencing back when we voted on personnel, is that ways to go outside the box in order to get the residents and the citizens involved.
Okay. Any comments on this item? Michael?
Through the chair, thank you. So most of my questions were just around the, how much rigidity there is in the scheduling based on the bylaws, and we do dictate quite, very specifically, you know, the hours of the meetings, the duration of the meetings. I was just wondering if that, is that just based on, on precedence, or is there some legal requirement that makes us put that in the bylaws versus letting the committee decide these things as, as a committee and not having them in the bylaws?
So I, there's no legal requirement for, so for instance, there's, I think there's two things around the start time. So there's the start time, allowing the start time between five and seven, you know, it could be Councilmember Medina's suggesting that it starts at six. I mean, that, that, that's one thing. I mean, it's not required, but it's generally found in all bylaws when, when the start time is. And then the second thing has to do with the length of the meeting. And what this does in this case, previously it said it was going to start at a certain time and end at a certain time. Since there's the fluctuating allowance for start time, we said we just specified a length of time. There's also a line in it, though, that the meeting can be extended beyond that point if committee members, you know, want to, you know, want to extend it. My, my guess is why you find that is that it generally lays out the commitment that committee members are facing when, when they look through this and they're considering serving on a committee. They know that generally meetings aren't going to last more than two and a half hours, so when they're considering whether or not to be on a committee, they have all the, you know, the general guidelines in front of them.
But, but say the majority of the, of a committee decided they wanted to meet on Saturday to make it more accessible to the public and get more participation, then that would require a change to the bylaws that then have to come back to us for them to do that?
That's a good question. Yeah.
That is true.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Irene.
I'm thinking some of that is because staff has to come to these meetings and help out with them, so if it, if they decide to do it on a Saturday, that's overtime for someone or...
It's going to be overtime anyway if they meet in the evening.
Well, but a Saturday's a Saturday, as opposed to, you know, six to seven or something. I'm just saying, that's probably why, that's probably why that's there. Plus, if they, if we have, as a council, have sat, like, you know, there's Personnel Board and there's council meetings and there's all these other meetings, and they want to overlap at a different time, that would be a conflict, conflict as well, so. I'm just saying that's probably why it's there. Anyway.
Okay. I think I can live with it. Thank you.
City Attorney, can we have some language in there that says, at the, at the pleasure of the chair or the, or the pleasure of the majority of the board?
I think there already is language in there that allows the meeting to be extended on motion. That's not an uncommon thing. I don't know if it exists in, in the other bylaws, but one of the things that the council members' comments have raised for us is wanting to take a look at all of the bylaws and make sure that, that they're all consistent. In doing some of that research over the last day or so, we, we did discover a number of instances in which there were inconsistencies. Fortunately, we do have templates and copies of all of them, so I anticipate we'll come back to you with some cleanup on, on some of the other ones as well.
Okay. So are we going to introduce the resolution with an amendment to the amendments?
I, I just, I, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, I, I just put in those two thoughts about a definitive starting time, or a time that technically it starts, rather than leaving it vague, and then I, I'm making a suggestion under 3.11 that it not be four absences if there are six meetings a year. I think that that's a, that needs to be reevaluated, in my mind. I think four's a, out of sixes, not, not, not a good showing for a year.
So you need a second on his amendment?
I, I would go ahead and introduce that with those two changes.
Councilmember Medina.
Are you clear? Irene?
I'm not clear. I'm sorry. Rico, are you asking for a, a specific time? Like, are you suggesting a time, like, six, or did you want the bylaws to reflect that the, the committee itself? I'm confused.
No, I, I guess if you're asking, can they, can we make appointments, the committee group come together and say, we'd like to meet at six o'clock, then I think that should be the start time. I'm okay with that because they need to get together. But I'm just saying that every year it's up for a discussion, and it's between five and seven. I think it makes it hard. We get into a pattern, we're seven o'clock every second and fourth Tuesday, people know that. And so I think if it's going to be six, say it's six, they can certainly change it, or if we want to wait until they have their first meeting with new appointments, that's fine to set a time that it is known. I mean, and I can almost quote to you when every committee, commission, board, what time and what day they meet, because that's what it is. It doesn't, next year it's not going to change, where I have to go figure out what time it is or the resident does. So that was the reason for the specifying the hour.
I understand that part, so, how do you want to word it? What, what are you asking? Are you...
Either we set a time now or we allow the committee after appointment to meet. I would say, why don't we set it now, and why don't I ask the Community Development Director, what, what time are the meetings now, and does the Community Development Department have a suggestion for a time starting?
So they typically meet at six o'clock. I mean, what I would, what I would suggest is that you can't have a default time at six o'clock, but then it'll still allow, so, so you have a default time within the actual bylaws, but then also allow some discretion of the committee on an annual basis to change that. But when you look at the bylaws, it's six o'clock, and that's what it will be.
Then why don't I suggest in this that under Section 2.1, it'd be six o'clock starting time, and under Section 3.11, I think it's 3.11, if I'm not mistaken, it goes from four to three.
Staff clear on that?
Yes.
I'm thinking two, actually.
Is that...
Or unless somebody has another suggestion on that.
No, yeah. I, I would suggest two, actually, out of six.
I like Irene, she's tough.
Because there, you need continuity, and, you know, that's some of the reason why they made it six instead of twelve.
I didn't want to push it, so I went to three to try and meet somewhere in the center, but, up, up to the body.
It's too unexcused.
It's too unexcused?
Yes, that works.
So I'm six, unless they have a lot more meetings. Okay, is, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Vice Mayor? Okay, so we will go to two, from four to two, and six o'clock starting. And with those changes, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution amending the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee bylaws.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Now we are on Item A, which is appoint citizens to the Citizens Advisory Commissions, Boards, and Committees. We have five vacancies with Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Are there nominations?
Through the chair.
Yes.
I know it's not listed, but the city clerk had already let us know. David Nigel has also applied for a position on that body, so I would recommend and nominate David Nigel for Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay. David Nigel? On the question? All in favor of David?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Four more?
Through, through, can I make a nomination?
Absolutely. I only had one more, I was done.
Okay, oh, well, go ahead.
All right, I'll just do one more and I'm going to stop. I'd like to, for Bicycle and Pedestrian, nominate Henry Marr.
I took it.
Any other nominations for this particular one? Is seeing that all in favor of Henry Marr?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we need, could use three more.
Through, through the chair, I'll, I'll nominate Jeffrey Tong for BPAC. Jeffrey Tong, he, he's interviewed previously.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's not on that list.
Excuse me here, I apologize.
But he, he was on, on Carol's list.
We've interviewed him before.
Jeffrey Tong was on, on your list for BPAC.
Is there a second for Jeffrey?
Is he the gentleman that was here earlier?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second him.
Okay, motion second, Jeffrey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We need two more.
I'll nominate Rachel Duran.
Okay.
No? Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of Raquel?
Aye.
Aye.
Such enthusiasm.
Opposed?
Where are we at, Rachel?
Raquel.
Raquel, sorry.
No, oh.
Okay, how many do we have for Raquel? Irene?
Three, I mean, me.
Close?
We have, we have three.
Aye.
Aye, go ahead.
And the last one?
Cecile? I'd like to nominate Cecile. Yes, please.
Okay, any, anything on the question? All in favor of Cecile?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Okay, you have five. Carol, did you get those? We need one, one person to serve in the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. Are there any nominations?
Do you want to nominate Peter Carey?
I'll second.
Motion second for Peter Carey. Any other nominations? Action? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Peter Carey. And I would like to suggest that we hold culture and arts to our next meeting. There are one or two people that we wanted to interview, but they weren't able to attend this evening, so we'll hold that to the next meeting if that's all right with everybody. Thank you very much. So now we're getting these all filled, that's great. Okay, now we're going to go to Item, I think, let's see, C. Receive a report on cost for suggested alternative improvements to memory lane and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the council's third meeting on memory lane, and that's in addition to the two subcommittee meetings that two of you had late last year. At the last meeting, the council distilled the alternatives that we have in the, had in the staff report to essentially three: cameras, bollards, and ADA and other safety improvements. So those are discussed in some detail in the staff report, as they were in the last staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions about them, but in brief, the cameras would cost about $8,000, the bollards about $13,000, and the ADA safety improvements about $20,000. There were two other issues that some of the council members raised at the last meeting. First of all was what was the cost of relocating the water line that's in the easement under the Grace Honda lot, and we've got an estimate from staff of about $440,000 to relocate that. Second question was asked, what's the cost of relocating, or excuse me, of closing the lane with fences and gates? And we also got an estimate from six to 13,000 depending on the type of fence material that's, that's used. And actually, as you saw in an earlier presentation tonight from SFO, there are a number of fence alternatives, some of which they were proposing along their property that are different than the Cyclone, fences that are at the lower end of, of our cost range. What, what SFO is proposing is a type of fence that's a bit at the, at the higher end of the cost range. So understanding that all of the estimates are preliminary, no projects have been designed or built, those are the, kind of the best numbers we could come up with. So tonight, we're simply requesting direction on whether to implement any of those alternatives, and if so, whether to fund them now from one-time revenues, since they're not currently budgeted, or to wait for a decision on the grant application. If the council decides to wait for the grant application, we won't find out about that until July and possibly later, and realistically, that means that work wouldn't really start occurring until early 2013. We think the chances of getting the grant are no better than about 50/50. If the council decides to go ahead and do it now, we proceed to obtain bids for the work as necessary and return for an award. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
If we were to do one part of, of these suggestions now, and we received a grant, we can backfill what we've spent?
So I, I don't believe it's the kind of grant that is for reimbursement. You'd have to, if you spent the money, then we'd have spent the money.
Okay, all right. Any discussion by council? What would you like to see, if anything? And how would you like to pay for it?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Is there members of the public that might want to speak?
Well, we usually talk first, but that's fine. Let's hear what you have to say. Tell us your name and your affiliation.
City council members, my name is Jennifer Rice, and I'm counsel for Grace Honda. My client and I have reviewed the staff report and the options that are contained there in it. As far as cameras are concerned, Grace Honda had its own cameras last year, and they were vandalized. I mentioned this in a letter to Mr. Zaffarano last year. Obviously, moving the segment, moving the facility trench is not going to work. The cost is, is prohibitive. Grace Honda requests that you consider, that you can continue to consider closure of at least the segment over the Grace Honda lot. That segment is a little different. It wasn't part of the original 1939 lane. It's constantly traversed by vehicular traffic, so it presents a unique danger to users of the lane, both pedestrians and, and drivers. It's a pedestrian-only roadway. No bicycles are allowed on it, so we're not losing bike, we're not losing backpack. And on that section of memory lane, people can and do leave the lane and traverse the Grace Honda parking lot, mostly in the diagonal. And as we mentioned last week, the only way that section of the lane constitutes a shortcut is if people actually make a diagonal path across the Grace Honda lot. In addition, the position of the lane impedes Grace Honda's future construction needs, and I won't take your time with going into that again, but if you recall there is a requirement by Honda America that they upgrade and expand their facility if they're going to stay at that location. I should mention that if Grace Honda can't expand their facility at that location, then they will be forced to relocate. And the loss to the city in sales tax will not be replaced by a multi-use building with retail on the ground level, just because of the volume and cost of automobile inventory. The sales tax that is generated, of which the city shares, are much larger, much greater than you could expect to see from just about any other kind of business that would go in that, particularly small, small town. There are two statutes that I would ask you to consider that set the standard for closure. And the first of these is Vehicle Code Section 21102.1, which deals specifically with alleys. And it provides a simple procedure by which, notwithstanding any other provision of law, local authorities may restrict vehicular or pedestrian access through any alley by a gate or barrier, if necessary, to protect, excuse me, to protect or preserve public peace, safety, health, and welfare, providing notices given at the entrances to the alley. In terms of public peace, safety, health, and welfare, my client alone made four calls to the police department last year, and the resulted police reports with regards to issues arising from memory lane. So I, I think that that finding, and that's just barely scratching the surface of problems of memory lane, so I think that that finding can be made. The second statute is Street and Highway Code Section 8324, which provides that a street may be... which provides that a street may be closed if it's unnecessary for public use. So the standard isn't if it's convenient for public use. Or the standard isn't is it used? The standard is is it necessary for public use? And the segment of memory lane that goes from Linden Avenue to El Camino is not necessary for public use. It may be convenient... in fact, it's not memory lane itself that's convenient. What's convenient is to walk diagonally across the Grace Honda parking lot to get either to Old Queens or to reach the bus stop or the pedestrian crossing across El Camino where we are at the end of the block. If a pedestrian stays on memory lane, they're not making a shortcut. The distance is exactly the same as if they were to walk up Linden and down Austin Springs or down Linden and along the Jethi, they'll end up in the same place. So in considering closure of memory lane, those are the two standards that you... two... it's an alley, it's a simple procedure. Is there a public interest in safety or health or peace in closing it? Or is it necessary? And then finally, in terms of the informal survey that was sent out, I noted that a number of respondents in the survey wanted to know why. Why were we talking about Grace Honda? So the survey didn't explain to them the difficulties that their neighbors were having with memory lane. So when they said, yes, we'd like to keep memory lane open, in a way, they weren't given sufficient information, and they weren't making informed decisions. And I think that if those people understood the impact on their neighbors of living on memory lane, the problems that memory lane causes to them, that you probably would have had a very different... a quite different result from that survey. And so therefore, we would ask that you either have that survey be done or analyze the impact into its wording, or bear in mind that people, when they answered that survey, didn't have a role in it.
Question for you. I believe at one of the previous meetings, I asked for some corroboration, if you will, from Honda of America about their new corporate program and their new showroom program and the square footages and that their intent was to have Grace Honda comply with that if they were to stay. Did we ever get anything from them? No?
I don't think so, but Ms. Rice can answer that.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that you had requested documentation. My understanding was that if I came and explained it to you...
Yeah, we did, and I don't believe you were at the first meeting, if I'm not mistaken, but...
I would be glad to...
We did provide... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt. We did submit a letter requesting that information specifically after the second of the last three meetings, I believe.
Okay.
And my appearance was in response to that letter. I didn't understand that you had requested documentation.
Right. It was stated a number of meetings ago that if we don't get it closed, we're gonna have to move, and they want us to do so many thousand square feet. And I said, well, can you get something from corporate to say, you know, this is what's happening, and not just here, but in other locations? So number two to staff. So if that line... if the water line stays in place, is there a way to actually build over it?
No, the city standard would prohibit building on top of an existing water or other utility line in order to avoid accessibility issues, ongoing maintenance and repair.
Okay. So the removal... the movement of the line would cost $440,000, I'll leave as a quote, which is way, way too much to even consider now, I believe, but could be incorporated into future corporate expansion? I just made a statement, that's all. I'm not looking for an answer.
I would like to say that if construction did take place, then Grace Honda would work closely with the city and the city's requirements to make sure that access for maintenance of the pipeline was provided, of course.
I bet you would, right? Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions for Grace Honda who are one in this segment?
Through the chair, if I could. I believe we discussed offline, Mark, some of the same points that the attorney brought up regarding alleys and how they're defined within the code. Can you address the issues that she brought up and let us know if there is any... any additional information beyond what we heard originally on your report?
Right. The section of the vehicle code 21102.1 does relate to alleys. This isn't an alley because there's no through vehicular traffic for the public. So we did look at that early on, actually, last year as one of the alternatives, but we found that this does not meet the definition of an alley for exactly that reason. With respect to streets and highways, code 8324, that is, in fact, one of the statutes that's for abandonment of a public way that is correct. I would note that the survey, whether you like it or not, did indicate that 79% of those respondents... of those who responded did indicate that they didn't favor closure of that particular section. We did ask by section. And with respect to the survey itself and the public not being aware of what the problems were, we, as you may know, compiled a complete list of what everybody said in writing on their surveys. And I think looking at those surveys makes it abundantly clear that the people who responded, not just the ones who wanted the lane closed, but even the ones who wanted to keep it open, were quite familiar with some of the issues surrounding the lane. They listed several things on their survey forms that talked about those particular issues. So I don't think there was any lack of knowledge or information about... from the survey respondents.
If I may, I based that statement on statements made by Laura, Assistant Assistant Attorney, sorry, I forget her surname, who stated in her report that there were a number of respondents who wanted to know what the concerns were and who had questions and additional concerns about the violations of Grace Honda. That leads me to think that there were a number of people who really didn't know. Obviously, some did, but not everybody did. And it seems as if it was... if somebody had extraneous knowledge of what was going on in memory lane, then they would write that into the survey. But there's nothing in the survey itself to inform you of the fraud.
All right. Thank you.
Just for the record, there was one of the survey respondents asked for more information about what the reasons for the lane closure was.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Through the chair.
Michael.
I could ask another question of the city attorney. So if an alley is defined by the law as something that allows cars and people to go through, what would the law call this piece of...
It's a pedestrian way. That's how it's defined. There's, as I think the attorney's presentation pointed out, there's very little that's specifically applicable to pedestrian ways. And that's the reason why our advice has been, if you're gonna close it, you have to vacate it formally, just like any other public thoroughfare. And that requires a finding that the use is not necessary. The surveys did indicate that a number of people do use that particular segment as well as the rest of it, and that was the basis for our recommendation or indication that the staff probably could not recommend that that finding be made if it were to come up in the future.
And during the last meeting, I believe it was Mr. Lebkey, made a reference to another section somewhere in the city that had been closed. Is there any background information on that and if it's similar?
Right. We did look into that. Aaron may have some additional information about that. I think he was referring to some easements that were in an unused area, and I don't recall the details, but it was not... they were not pedestrian ways.
Okay. All right. And so are we getting any recommendation from staff then regarding either any of these proposed improvements?
So I think we have told you that these are improvements that staff would recommend. We think they strike a balance between the desires of some members of the public to keep the lane open and usable at all three segments, and also the concerns that were raised by a number of the residents, specifically with respect to security and safety issues. Neil is here, I believe, still perhaps. If there's any questions about the cameras, for example. We certainly recommend the ADA improvements. One of the residents brought that up at your last meeting. And as far as the bollards are concerned, we think that would certainly help with making sure that there isn't any illegal vehicle traffic through the lane, and it would certainly discourage mopeds and those kinds of things with a set of three bollards that are difficult to navigate through.
Okay. And it seems like we're treating the residential section of memory lane separately from the Grace Honda portion of it. So everything that's being proposed now would be improvements to the residential area. And I guess the only piece that really pertained to Grace Honda was the cost of moving the water main that runs through there. So at this point, we wouldn't be doing anything on the Grace Honda portion of the lane?
That is true.
Okay. Thank you.
Other than maybe closing.
Through the chair. So based on what Mr. Salazar's question is, legally, we would not be able to abandon? In your opinion, we'd not be able to find... have the findings, which means that we would not be able to legally abandon the lane?
Well, let me put it this way.
In your opinion, at this point?
Yep. Our staff's job is to make the best recommendation we can to you. And what we're indicating is, based on all the information we have, we wouldn't be able to recommend to the city council that it make that finding, and it would potentially leave the city open to a challenge by those members of the public who use the lane, indicating that it was a closure that's not authorized by the Streets and Highways Code. Having said all of that, it is ultimately a city council decision and a balancing of the risks and benefits of those particular actions. One of the things we did here at the last meeting, I think, from several council members and perhaps even members of the public, is that is the option of at least trying some of the measures that we're recommending first to see whether they will help. And hopefully, they will, thus making closure or abandonment something that doesn't need to be considered in the future.
Any questions, comments?
One comment I'd like to make. I definitely think we need to do something. And what I've heard from the public is that for years, they've been dealing with this. It's been before other councils, and no action has been taken. And I don't want this council to be one that doesn't take any action, so I'd like to see something done. I have a concern that at some point, either now or in the future, we may make a decision to close a piece of the street on Grace Honda. And I think that's... it's an insult to the residents that we would do it for a company based on their profits and not for the residents based on their sense of security. And so if... I mean, if we can get some assurance that at no point would we make that decision to close it for Grace Honda, then I'd be comfortable with looking at some other measures. But if there is some possibility that because Grace Honda's corporate mandate says that they need that piece of land, and we'd find a way to do it for them, but not to do it for the residents, I don't think that's something I could support.
Okay.
Referencing closing. Closing.
Any comments or suggestions, what would you like to see?
Through the chair. Obviously, when it came forward back from the subcommittee, I may mention it was the first time I got to hear the challenges and the problems residents have been suffering. And I don't think I wasn't walking that the next day. And spoke to one of the gentlemen who spoke here at the mic twice. And we took a walk ourselves, so I could better appreciate and understand it. So I would agree that I think something does need to be done. I don't think we need to meet and talk about it further. It comes down to, as it was mentioned, so how are we gonna pay for it? I would look for maybe at least a option to move forward, potentially cameras. As I've said, we've had some positive by the Cameron Beckner. There was another time when I worked with the city that we didn't have cameras at the recreation facility, and then we put cameras in. It helped to deter some of the activity in the teen room and the gymnasium. So I think that the cameras have had a proven worth in the past in two locations. Granted, in the city park area. But I at least think we need to do something. I would say to do more, but I'm worried about costs. Because obviously, the only thing staff's gonna say is, well, then, we're gonna go into reserves because that's the only resource right now that we have with no grant unless we wanna wait. And waiting till 213, I don't think is fair, honestly. So that's just my two cents right now.
Anyone else? Irene?
Thank you. I know our staff, they went and bring forward costs of something without a way to pay for it. So if we decide to do all the things mentioned here, what is your recommendation about paying for it?
I was hoping the city manager would answer that question.
There are no funds budgeted, either in the capital budget or in the operating budget, that would cover the costs associated with the improvements. We have submitted a grant application to the Safe Roots to School program. As the city attorney indicated, we are not highly optimistic, given the competitive nature and the limited funding for those grants and the city's recent experience. It's been several years since we've been awarded a Safe Roots to School grant. So with that said, the only funds that would be available would be funds that are either one-time resources that we anticipate will exceed cost projections for the current year budget or... and would otherwise be placed in reserves or the reserves itself. Oh, go ahead.
Would the ADA improvements be able to be... it's like other funds, like measure A funds or something?
Thank you for clarifying that, yes. The... we do have an ongoing street and ramp... I'm sorry, sidewalk and ramp improvement program that is operating in various areas throughout the city. This location could be added to that list. And I believe that the funding for that program is a combination of gas tax and other street-related funds. So thank you for clarifying that, yes.
Thank you. I'm a proponent to have it closed. I do still believe that the residents there have endured enough and that if I lived there, that I would be pushing to have it closed. But then, I mean, I trust my city attorney, and if he says that we'd be up for a challenge, I mean, I'm not gonna stand here and, you know, and push to have it closed only to be, you know, only to be challenged and have to deal with it in the court. Because I think there might be, you know, a challenge. There was some pretty... the residents that were coming here were, you know, were pretty adamant that they wanted to keep it open. So I would just say, I'm still in favor of having it closed and if there's a way that we can pursue that. But with that said, I think the residents do need some assurances that they're gonna be safe. And, you know, my feeling is that, you know, the cameras are the cheapest thing to deter it. I think bollards... that's a high price for bollards. I think there's other ways that we can deter vehicles. I mean, they do that on school campuses as far as, you know, shifting fencing, something that to just allow pedestrians. So I think there's... there are cheaper ways, less expensive ways to accommodate that. But I think the cameras are gonna be the key in, you know, deterring any activities.
And I sat in the subcommittee meetings and listened to the last number of meetings we had here on this. And I can't push for closure at this point in time. I think we have to give deterrence a chance. And the cheapest way to deter anything at this point in time is spending $8,000. this point in time is spending $8,000 in cameras. And if we have to take it from reserves, we do. But it'll give us an indication of what deterrence will do, short of just closing the lane. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense to put in ADA right now, if in fact, there's a potential of closing it in the future. So I think the initial step should be to spend the $8,000 and put the cameras in and see what types of results we have from that.
The chair, I would agree, Mr. Man, with the ADA, because if, and again, I sat here saying, at least let's try this, and if we come back and nothing's better, nothing's improved, and we close, and we spent how many thousands on?
Twenty.
Twenty thousand on ADA, then to me, that's money we could have spent elsewhere in the community.
Right.
Through the chair.
Michael? Michael?
I'll hold my.
Would you like to say something? Please step to the podium.
Thank you. The floor. Thank you.
I apologize for this, but I know it's late, and everyone wants to get out. But I had some questions for the attorney.
You are the owner of Grace Honda, just so everyone knows.
Oh, yes. I'm home Miami, Grace Honda. Okay.
Sorry. It's not a question and answer session. If you have a comment to make, please go ahead. And if you have questions?
Yes.
We'll be happy to take them down and get back to you at a later date if we can't answer them right now.
Thank you. I did install cameras for the dealership, and it was quite costly. Cameras either are invisible, or they are megapixel, they're quite expensive if you want to recognize the intruders, for example, or whoever gets involved with crime. So I'd like to know what $8,000 mean eventually. I thought it would be quite a bit more expensive. And how are they going to be installed? Where are they going to be? Are they going to be high on poles? Because the lane does not allow for high, any sort of poles. It's not a street. There are no poles. There are homes. There is a neighborhood. I don't know where the camera's going to be. That's one of the questions. How much it's going to be $8,000 is a big question to me, because it would have, it cost me about $60,000 to put cameras, some cameras around the dealership. And some of it had to be on the top of the building, which is quite a bit higher than the neighborhood, and some of it had to be on the highest poles that I have in the dealership, the light posts, or the Honda sign. And the next question is, how do you see if any one of you had a business, and people constantly ran through, especially if they were on bicycle, and they came running through, not watching any pedestrian, anybody going into cars, getting out of cars, or driving through the lot? And the other day, and this happens all the time, the children are all over the lot. The people walk through, the people going to Walgreens cross, and they always go in diagonal. The people going to the hotel, Motel Eight, they're always crossing the parking lot. They are not staying on Memory Lane. So that's an issue. But the other day, I really was terrified, because this bicycle, the person on bicycle ran through the lot like it was, you know, a park, or was a street, or was a, I don't know what he was thinking. He could have gotten hurt, and I, you know, I would be totally in trouble if he was hurt, or if he hurt somebody, or if he hurt one of my customers, for example. So I appreciate if the members look at this, and the members of the neighborhood, and I appreciate, I'd like a comment for this, for the future. I don't feel great about the neighborhood having had all the problems that they have had. And if the children from the school get hurt or injured, that's not a good thing either.
Okay, we're going to have to wrap it up here pretty quick, so, thank you.
I appreciate you letting me speak, but it's really hurtful.
Thank you.
That's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any more council discussion?
I had something to say, but I forgot what it was.
Well, I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, that lane has been there before Grace Honda was there, so people have used it often. I use it often. There's no fencing anywhere from El Camino. People can wander from El Camino through your lot, so there's no restrictions that way. If we close Memory Lane from the back, there's nothing closing it from the front. People can just walk on there. So I understand about kids going through, but they don't do it all day long. They do it a little bit in the morning, and they do it a little bit in the afternoon when school's out. So I think you're exaggerating a little bit. Also, that's how I bought my cars from you. I bought two cars from Grace Honda because I walked down Linden and went through Memory Lane and was cutting across diagonally to Walgreens and saw a car that I liked and bought it. And then I went, did it again, and saw another car and bought it. So, you know, it's a showroom. It's a, I mean, it's an outdoor area that people walk through all the time, even if Memory Lane's there or not. So I'd just like to make that comment. I don't know about the answers for where the cameras would go, but...
Well, we can get those answers from staff. I think they've looked at that.
Well, I was just going to say, I think to start with, I agree that cameras, if they can be relatively inexpensive and would do the job, I think they have proven successful in other areas of the city to deter kids from doing vandalism and things, and I think it's a good first start. And also, I wanted to know, has staff contacted the school again? Or have you been able to work with the school district, maybe? If not, with the Parkside directly, maybe with the school district to talk about different ways to deterring the kids from doing anything on that lane that they're not supposed to be doing?
I'm hoping Neil Telford has an answer to that last question. I have not spoken to the school, but I know he has in the past. I don't know if it's been since the last meeting.
Okay. So that's my comment.
We did contact Parkside. We looked at consulting with Parkside to have them enhance administrative penalties for students caught in Memory Lane that are fighting or creating a disturbance, and they are agreeable to doing that. So we will go ahead and move forward and work with Parkside to provide kind of an enhanced penalty zone for Memory Lane for students who act up in that area.
Okay, thank you. Did you remember what you were going to?
Yeah, yes, I did. Can't back. And actually, I had another question after listening to the last speaker. I'm wondering, is there a possibility that there will be a privacy issue with cameras that are pointing into the alley, but also looking into people's backyards?
Through the chair, I do know that we've had some discussions with Neil about that, and we'll certainly need to take that into consideration. We're aware of the fact that that is an issue, and we'll work with staff to come in with a plan that addresses that as best as possible.
Okay. And the other comment I had, and it may be, the point may be moot, since I think we're moving away from doing any ADA improvements, but I'm wondering, in this area, what would that entail? There's already ramps there. They're, it looks like they're fairly new, they're bright yellow. What else would be left to do?
I believe there is at least one curb, if not two, that don't have ADA ramps up at the west end of the lane.
Okay.
Any more discussion or action by the council? Would you like to suggest to staff that we go ahead with the cameras, or what's your feeling?
I'd like to suggest we go ahead with the cameras.
And the funding for that, then, is coming from our reserves?
Whatever staff tells us works.
Somehow, they're going to find money that is left over, and, but, in the worst-case scenario happens, I would say reserves. For $8,000 and for, the neighbors deserve that. They dealt with this far too long, and for what we've heard, and so I say, and I'm one of those that doesn't like using reserves. So if that's the worst-case scenario that has to be used, I'd say yes.
Okay. Does staff have a direction?
Yes.
Yes?
Proceed with the cameras.
Okay.
Sorry, I was just hoping we could get a motion or stop.
Okay.
I move, we go ahead with the cameras.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to go with the cameras. On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay. I vote. We're moving, we're three more to go. Okay. 10F, receive reporting confirmed that a weekly farmer's market is consistent with the Tanforan Plan Development zoning requirements, and receive update regarding the shops of Tanforan parking reduction request.
Aaron? Thank you. As the city council knows, for the past three years, the Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with Pacific Coast Farmer's Market, has thrown a downtown farmer's market on Sunday morning. Unfortunately, in the last year, according to the chamber, and if you've been there, the attendance had dwindled, and the number of vendors had dwindled as well. The chamber approached city staff several months ago, requesting that the market be moved to Tanforan. They stated that Pacific Coast Farmer's Market was unwilling to throw the downtown farmer's market on Sunday mornings at this time because of the low attendance numbers and because of the low attendance numbers by the vendors. The chamber, as well as the Pacific Coast Farmer's Market, believe that by moving it to Tanforan, it will increase attendance. Now, why this is for you is that this is a planned development zone, which has site-specific zoning, and this is generally zoned for a mall and the retail uses that are in a mall. What we've done in the past for other type of uses that are similar to this, which are pumpkin patches, Christmas tree lots, we've approved them at a staff level. But since this is more major in nature, we thought it was a good idea to bring it to the city council for confirmation that this is consistent with the plan development for the zoning district. In terms of the market, it would be similar to how it was run in previous years, you know, nine to one on Sundays. It would end before Thanksgiving. The market did this, the chamber proposed this, so it wouldn't conflict with the peak shopping system, this season, as well as the peak parking time, which we'll get into as well. It would take up about 70 parking spaces. It would be just to the north of the main entrance of the mall in front of Ulta, but right next to El Camino Real. They're estimating that there would be about 50 booths at this market on average, which is more than what was in the downtown area. Now, the reason that this is here before you, in conjunction, even though these are two separate items, the farmer's market and the parking issue, they're also two connected items. The council may remember several years ago, after the Tanforan remodel, Tanforan Mall ownership came to the city council with a request to reduce their overall parking requirement. Now, this was being done for two reasons. There were a number of parking spaces that had to be removed during, about 150 spaces that had to be removed during the construction phase because of new exiting requirements, as well as new ADA requirements. Their existing parking space requirements are four and a half spaces per 1,000 square feet of leasable area. This took them down to about the 4.3 range. That's what they're existing at today. They wanted to take it down to a 4.0 per 1,000 to make way if they ever had a fourth anchor, so they wouldn't have to build another parking structure. We did a parking survey at that time, and the parking survey results were consistent with what Mall Ownership said. There wasn't a demand for that much parking. There was a demand for about, at peak season during that Christmas holiday season, for about two and a half spaces per 1,000. That is consistent with other malls around the area, Hillsdale, some malls in the East Bay as well. But what the survey did find is that, what we've all found when we've gone to Tanforan, that there is some crowding of parking, in particular in that area in front of BJ's, as well as several other areas. Because of the declining economy, however, the mall never did implement any of these improvements, so it never came back in front of the city council again for final confirmation of this lower parking requirement. The Mall Ownership has submitted a letter, and the Mall General Manager has submitted a letter that they prefer not to do this. They believe that situation has changed since that time period, that two malls, that two structures have opened, the cinema site parking structure has opened, the J.C. Penney's parking structure has opened, and people have generally found where they're going to go, because people are more familiar with the mall site. So in terms of next step, there's really two next steps. For the farmer's market, if the council agrees that this is consistent, the immediate step would be that the Community Development Director, myself, would issue, after a review of all departments, would issue a temporary use permit for the market to operate for three months. So during that three months, we would have the option of doing two things. Going to the Planning Commission for, the Planning Commission's approval for the remainder of this season would be option one. And option two would be going to the Planning Commission, so that they would just approve this to be an annual market at Tanforan. Regarding the parking, rather than just approve the lower, going forward with the lower parking requirement, staff is requesting that we do a little bit more analysis to see whether or not the assumptions that Mall Ownership has made in their letter are true, and that parking is more dispersed than it was before, and that we can support a lower parking requirement without the weigh-finding signage, without the valet parking, and valet parking that was suggested by staff and by the city council, and directed by the city council years ago. So with that, I could take any questions.
Good. Any questions, Aaron? Michael?
It just occurred to me that, looking at the map that was provided in the package, that it's either the same area or adjacent to the area where fireworks usually are sold. Is that correct?
Correct. I think fireworks may be in Tanforan. Yeah. It's in the Sears lot, so it's on the other side. This is actually in, it would be north of there is where the fireworks are actually usually sold.
And are we concerned at all about any impact about having both of these events occurring at the same, I mean, at some point, they will overlap?
Yeah, they will overlap for a couple of weeks. I wouldn't be concerned. I mean, generally, parking, you know, we'll have to take in consideration circulation and things like that, and that will be incorporated into the use permit. In terms of parking, I wouldn't be concerned about it. Generally, mall parking requirements are there for the top 10 shopping days of the year, and since the middle of the summer isn't those shopping, I don't think there'll be conflicts in terms of parking. But we will have to pay attention to it in terms of circulation, how people are getting in and out of the mall.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Irene? Okay.
I don't have any questions per se, or, well, first of all, I appreciate it, coming to the city council. It's good to see all the thought that has gone into this, and I agree that the valet parking is not necessary. I've had several people with other concerns, though, come to me, and I'd like to, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to address them, or to add them to what you're already considering. If you look at the map, and if you look directly across, say, directly west of the point of the Barnes and Noble, or next to the Barnes and Noble, where you can see the crosswalk hatch marks there. That's the only place they have them, and it's very visible. If you go directly north of that, where there is also high pedestrian crossing, and will be even more if you put the market in there, there isn't, there's just one half of a...
That's a good point.
So I'd like to see that increase somehow, either the similar hatch marks, or, you know, something more visible. And then I also agree that people are more comfortable and know more about where to park, except for one place. If you travel south on the main road, I don't know, whatever that road is called, and as you're going south...
Towards J.C. Penney.
Toward J.C.'s Penny's, there's the aisle that is two-way traffic. Everyone else is one-way, but there's the aisle that's two-way traffic that eventually gets you to the target garage.
Target garage, yeah.
A lot of people don't know that that is there, that that's how you get there, or one of the ways you get there. I don't think it would be too expensive to have just a sign saying, "Additional garage parking this way," and at that corner. So I'd like to see those two improvements, in addition to the other, the cones and the other small temporary types of safety devices that you're looking at. So I know it's a different concept, I think it's an exciting one. I'm sorry that it was not, this farmer's market was not successful on San Mateo Avenue. And that was our original concept. I know it was everyone's, and we really wanted that to succeed. It's unfortunate that it didn't. Maybe there's something else that could go down there that would attract more foot traffic for the stores. Or maybe we just look at San Mateo Avenue in a different concept than a downtown with that kind of retail. Maybe we need to start thinking of it as, you know, a restaurant alley, or, not alley, that's the wrong definition. that's the wrong, wrong definition. Restaurant street.
Lane, don't say alley.
Yeah. So, so there's a lot of information and other cities out there that have done research about small towns that have lost their, their traffic because of malls and then what they do to revitalize it. And maybe small retail is not it. Maybe there's something else that we need to look at. So those are my comments.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah.
All right.
Well, that was easy.
Some action?
Yeah, just looking for consensus.
Consensus, yeah. Fine. Yep. Farmer's market at Tanfran.
Move forward.
We'll see you there, go for it, thank you.
Okay. May I make one more comment?
Yes.
Could we have, after it's all over, could we have a report back on how successful it was or not, or things that have come up and, you know, things we might need to look at the following time?
Correct. And if I could, through the chair, one question. Would, would the city council be more comfortable with the planning commission just approving it for the remainder of this year and not actually doing the annual thing yet and perhaps coming back later, the, next year to, to look at it again for something on an annual basis?
I would like that, just simply because we're not sure what we're getting into here, so I'd like to see how it works.
Yes. And, and Tanfran may also have comments and changes they'd like to make at the same time, so it's, I think it should come back to us as well.
Great. Okay. Thank you. All right.
May, may I make one more comment before we leave? I'd like to introduce our, have Linda stand up and introduce herself. Linda Larson is the manager of Tanfran Nash. She was also the former mayor and council member at the city of Millbury. So it's nice to see you back.
And do you miss sitting through a council meeting?
See, I was outside, those chairs are torturing me. I'm sorry. Meeting's nice and short. Yeah, I couldn't sit in the, now I wanna recognize all the people here, I know a lot of the faces and just like getting coming home again, so it's good to see you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unless Irene has another question, we're going to 10G, which is, receive report on meetings of the oversight board to the successor agency of the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you may be surprised that I'm starting a presentation, but I'm only gonna bore you for one or two minutes before Kim Duran and Connie Jackson, our finance director and city manager, jump in. We decided that it might be useful for you to see why everyone's having so much trouble figuring out what's going on with RDA dissolution, so we made a little chart for you and we're just gonna take a second and, and take you through it. The bottom line is you've got local agencies, county agencies, and state agencies all interacting in quite complicated ways, defined by state laws that are uncertain and subject to interpretation. So just for background, if you start at the bottom of the chart, on the left-hand side, we had a former redevelopment agency that came up with what was called an EOPS, an enforceable obligation payment schedule. That's what the RDA owed at the time. It also came up with a draft recognized obligation payment schedule, which is what it anticipated. It was going to owe in the future and for twice a year. Once the RDA was dissolved, it became, its duties were taken over by the successor agency. That's the next yellow block going up. And as you can see, the successor agency has a number of duties, including developing the ROPS, which has been done, and also staffing the oversight board, which is the third rectangle, yet again going up toward the top. So we have an oversight board composed of a number of people, you'll hear about that later in Kim's presentation, that is supposed to review and approve the ROPS. But wait, let's stop and look over to the right. We have the county auditor controller who's actually looked at those ROPS as well, both for the successor agency and for the oversight board, and is of course making recommendations up to the ultimate authority, the Department of Finance at the state. And they're the ones that ultimately say yes, no, or maybe, usually just yes or no, to what the successor agency and oversight board are doing. We're not done. We still have the state controller's office up at the top right-hand corner that oversees the county auditor controller to make sure that they're doing a proper job as well. So this is just a brief overview that, that shows you what the difficulties and complexities are of the system that we're working in. So if you hear staff telling you, both in the past and going on into the future, that we're not sure how to deal with these situations, it's truly because of the, of the Byzantine structure that we've been confronted with. So with that, we may or may not want to leave that up, but I know Kim has some, some comments to make on the staff report.
Thank you, Mark. So as you may recall, the oversight board consists of seven members that are appointed, that represent the largest taxing entities in San Bruno. So there's two appointments to the oversight board made by the city of San Bruno, two appointments made by the county board of supervisors, an appointment from the largest special taxing entity, which in our case is the Peninsula Healthcare District, an appointment by the Community College District, and finally, an appointment representing the school district. The oversight board, along with the successor agency, is tasked with winding down the activities of the former redevelopment agency. Here in San Bruno, that's primarily revolves around two tasks. One is, the first being the approval of the recognized obligation payment schedule every six months, and the second being the oversight and directing the successor agency to dispose of assets and properties of the former redevelopment agency. To date, three meetings of the oversight board have occurred. The primary focus of these three meetings has been to approve the first ROPS for the period of January through June 2012 by the April 15 deadline. In preparation of the oversight board's review of the ROPS, staff put together extensive information on each item that appeared on the ROPS for the, for background for the oversight board and a pretty thorough discussion occurred during those oversight board meetings of each of those items, with the oversight board ultimately approving the ROPS at its meeting on April 13. Some of the significant actions related to the approval of the ROPS are, the oversight board did authorize a repayment in the amount of $500,000 in, for the city advances to the redevelopment agency. There's a total amount of 2.9 million currently outstanding, so as part of their approval, they did authorize a repayment in June of $500,000. They established an interest rate on the outstanding advances at a rate equal to basically what the city is getting on its full investments right now, plus 1%, so that equates to about 1.4%, where previously the city was collecting interest at a rate of about 5.8%. The, the oversight board also determined that the zoning code, which was a obligation of the redevelopment agency previously, they did not feel that that meant the definition of an enforceable obligation of the agency going forward and therefore voted to remove that item from the ROPS that was presented to them. And finally, the oversight board did take action to approve an administrative budget for the successor agency, which will enable us to receive the $250,000 administrative allowance. Separate from that is a, a separate decision was, the oversight board actually retained its own independent legal counsel to advise them on matters. And they determined during that, their meeting, that that legal counsel would be funded separate from that $250,000 administrative allowance. So that was included as a separate line item to be funded separate from that allowance on the ROPS that they approved. So I say all that with a caveat, as Mark pointed out earlier, that while the oversight board has approved our first ROPS, it is now in the hands of the Department of Finance. It is up to their review and the ultimate approval of all those items. I can tell you that the Department of Finance is reviewing our ROPS currently. I have been in contact with them this week, providing additional documentation, and we do anticipate receiving a letter from them by the end of this week that would indicate any items that they may be sending back to the oversight board for reconsideration. The agenda for the next meeting of the oversight board will include the second ROPS for the timeframe of July through December 31st. The deadline for approval of that ROPS is on May 11th, so that's one of the main items on the agenda. And also a successor agency presentation of the two properties owned by the former redevelopment agency, so the police station and the public parcel at 470 San Mateo Avenue. And that presentation will highlight the public purpose of both of those properties. So that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions or comments.
Any questions of staff?
Just very quick, and I appreciate the updates, and, and Mark, it wasn't boring. You said on the agency board, there is the quote "school district." Which school district and how was that district chosen?
So the member of the school district represents the high school district. The code, it's a appointment by the superintendent of the school district, and so the appointment is, is in fact by, of the high school district in this case.
Okay, so why not another district? Why not the San Bruno Park School District? Why not? How is that, how is that high school? Because obviously there's the district.
I'm not, I'm, honestly, I'm not clear on what, why the high school district was chosen to be the representative in our case. We could further investigate that and get back to you.
It was just a question that was asked, so I was hoping to clear that up.
That was not determined by the successor agency and I, I can only, we, we will get you the clear, the clear and complete answer. I can only give a window of insight in that the Peninsula Healthcare District is the special district representative taxing entity that sits on our board. They sit on one other board in San Mateo County. They are there because they are the special district that receives the largest amount of property tax within, of special districts that are, receive property tax within San Bruno, they get the most. So I would speculate that potentially the decision about the school district relates to the amount of property tax that is generated either to the elementary district in our case or the high school district.
Thank you.
But we'll get you that answer.
Appreciate it. Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Irene.
I don't, I don't have a question. I just wanna commend staff for the tremendous amount of work they've done. This is not easy and it's new territory and there's mounds and mounds of paper to go through and I know Kim has worked extremely hard, along with the rest of the staff, to get all this done in addition to facing all the Glenview neighborhood stuff and in addition to facing the next budget session, so I thank you. It's not easy, but we do recognize all the hard work you're doing.
Agreed. It's a lot of work.
Yeah, then through the chair, I had asked, I think I emailed city manager and I said, is $250,000 really enough adequately when we're talking about legal fees and over staff time? Because if I started just to ask the finance director, how much of your time, percent-wise maybe, since we've started this, has this taken? City clerks, city attorneys, city managers, other department heads and staff. I really questioned. Now, I was assured, you know Rico, this going around to 250 should take care of it, but going forward, it may not. And I think that's something of a concern and granted, we, we don't have true control over what gets allocated to us anymore, but that's a concern of mine.
To that point, if I might, and that is a concern going forward, we do anticipate that the workload will diminish over a period of time because the continuing workload of the oversight board into, beyond this period of time and into the next years of the oversight board's operation, which is only until 2016, that it will be solely focused on the every six months certification of the ROPS. And once we get it down, it should, it's not gonna change, so it should be a fairly routine activity. That said, one of the things that we have learned is that the oversight board's, finance director Duran indicated, we have retained outside legal counsel. They believe and have determined that the, the $250,000 should not pay for that, but that's still up to the State Department of Finance to confirm, and they may or may not. Indication is at this point that they may not. So $250,000 since February 1st to June 30th probably covers even an extremely intense and time-consuming workload. I won't repeat that, but it has been well beyond what any of us would have anticipated. $250,000 for an entire year, probably not much if the workload were to continue at anywhere near the amount that it has been over the last month and a half.
Thank you. It's been exhaustive, I know. 10H, adopt a resolution approving letter of response to the 2011-12 San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury report, the county, San Carlos and Cal Fire, a missed opportunity.
Honorable members of the council, good evening. I plan on making this very brief. On February 15th, 2012, Judge Buckwald of the Superior Court sent the city a letter to, to San Bruno, well as agencies throughout the county, requesting a formal response to the civil grand jury's report entitled, "The County, San Carlos and Cal Fire, A Missed Opportunity." The response letter must be approved by the city council at a public meeting and submitted to Judge Buckwald by May 15. Essentially, the report deals with the dissolution of the South County Fire Authority and Cal Fire's interest, or San Carlos' interests of Cal Fire providing services, providing a bid for services. San Bruno's response supports the regional fire service concept. As the city council is aware, San Bruno is actively engaged in consolidation efforts with Millbury and Central County Fire and believes this option has the most potential at this time, but does not preclude the city from evaluating other options. Ultimately, the city has the right to determine the level of fire protection service it provides the community and that Cal Fire could certainly be included in that evaluation process. Be happy to answer any questions.
It's a brief report and we have a brief question.
No, no question. I was gonna.
No questions?
Introduce the resolution if that was okay.
Comments, questions? Do we have an action here?
Yes, I would like to go ahead and introduce the resolution for adoption for the letter that was presented by our San Bruno Fire Chief, Dennis Heck.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibera.
Aye.
Mayor Ruwing.
Aye. We already had on 11, 12 comments from council members. 13 closed session. We don't have a closed session this evening and tonight we will adjourn for the next regular city council meeting here on May 8.